Call to order, the meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Invite you to join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Welcome, everyone. We will start the meeting, as usual, with public comment. And I know many of you are probably here because of the importance of this meeting, it being Town Manager Andrew Mailer's last meeting with us. So I invite anyone who has a comment or any words they want to share, given that fact, to, or any other comment, to rise and speak.
Greg Gilligan, Superintendent of Schools.
Holly Wieske Lynch. Chair of School Committee.
All right. So we're going to miss Andrew. He's been a tremendous strategic partner, very supportive of the schools. And his leadership in town has definitely benefited not only our kids, but the infrastructure in all our schools and our teachers and staff. So we have here for Mr. Mailer, a plaque presented to Andrew Mailer, Town Manager, for his outstanding contributions and dedication to the north end of a public school and all of our students. Presented February 11th, 2019.
Thank you, Andrew. Anyone else here to?
Tim Sheerhart, Chairman of the Finance Committee, 283 Campbell Road. I don't have a lot to say. And I've thought this before Andrew gave his announcement. The one thing, I mean, change is hard. Losing him may be considered hard. But the one thing his legacy has left is his leadership. And that he's taught everybody. We've had some great several years. And I appreciate your time, your effort, your patience with me. But also, too, teaching us. So thank you very much for everything you've given. You've left some great people behind. And they're going to continue your legacy, I'm sure. Thank you.
Terry Hohn, North Andover Fields Committee.
Rick Green, North Andover Fields Committee.
So we felt it was important to be here tonight for Andrew, for everything he's done for us and the town. Obviously, there's so many places to go. But in particular, the kids in North Andover, the fields in North Andover, and the difference he's brought. Twenty-five years ago, you know, we started working on fields quite a bit. I forget how many years we've been in the Fields Committee. But everything was just a dream. It was a dream. No direction, nowhere to go. We wanted these, we wanted things, the kids needed things, but we couldn't get there. And Andrew came along and he had it. He took our dreams and he made them into a plan. And he brought us to where we are. We got Dale Street done, we got McAvoy Field done. We're now doing the recreation. We're redone every playground in town. I don't think we could be prouder. You know, we used to go to other towns and look at their fields and their gyms and say, geez, why can't we have that? And now they're coming to us. And they say, why can't we have that? We are what everybody else wants to be. So we've had a lot of meetings with Andrew. So, and he's probably tired of us. But we figured we'd give him a picture of ourselves. No. We'd like to present him with his letter.
Ah, I love it.
They're officially a little bit now.
Let us get a picture.
Also, this was really big for Terry Holland to do this tonight. Shaking like a leaf up here, but he did a great job. Also, tonight, you're going to be accepting $40,000 from the youth leagues once again as part of a plan that Andrew was instrumental in putting with us in terms of the new fields funds that we've done, actually, in the last seven to eight years now. That account has brought in over $417,000 over the period of time. We've obviously used some of that for some of the projects that Terry mentioned. Major part of this will be used as part of our friend-raising component for the recreation complex. And I'll echo what Terry and Rick and I talk about an awful lot. Our fields, at one point in the early 2000s, were one of the worst fields around. And we came up with a plan, the sponsorship program, the adoption program, as well as the long-range plans on playgrounds and everything else. And I would put our fields up against anybody's fields at this point in time. We still have a lot to do. This final project that hopefully Andrew will come back and see the finished product is going to be the best project that North Andover's ever done in terms of fields. We are going to be the toast of everyone around when this project is done. So once again, thank you again, Andrew, for all your support through the years on this.
Anyone else here for public comment?
Thank you. My name is Marcus Allovo. I live at 179 Coventry Lane. For those of you who are unaware, I know you are. I'm the Town Moderator. I promise to stay within three minutes. And please tell me otherwise. You can start the clock now. As you know, it's not uncommon for there to be significant tension between the legislative part of town government and the executive part of town government. And in my 40-plus years as a citizen and the last seven years as Town Moderator, I've experienced both parts of those equations, maybe even been responsible, in some cases, for some of that tension over the course of years. I can tell you without equivocation that the last seven years, the time of Mr. Mailer's tenure with us, has afforded a clarity, a confidence, and a trust between the legislative side of our government and the executive side of our government, which has never existed before. And I give him quite significant responsibility for that because it's been the clarity of his speech, the confidence of his word, and the trust in his skills, which has allowed that to be exhibited. It's important for me to give kudos to the Board of Selectmen who appointed Mr. Mailer, to see, to have the insight about that which he could provide. And to also give kudos to those members of the Board of Selectmen who have served with him over these last years and allowed his skills and abilities to be evidenced for the benefit and the pleasure of the community. When I first met Andrew, I told him that I hoped that he would be a consequential Town Manager. He has been exactly that, a consequential Town Manager. He's been transformative in the manner in which he's led the town and transformative in terms of the leave-taking, of the means, of the results of his leadership in concert with you as a Board of Selectmen, with our legislative function as a town meeting, and all of the citizens and volunteers in our community. I know that he leaves behind a template. And that template is one that we can follow for some reasonable period of time. And I pray that you will have the kind of insight that the Hiring Board had in Mr. Mailer in order to bring somebody of his ability and that level of confidence and trust that this community deserves. Because in truth, he has led a generational improvement and a legacy that by itself is generational. And for that, I have no gift for you, Andrew, except my appreciation. Thank you.
Stanleyford, 43 Stone Cleve Road. Of course, our Town Moderator is always a hard act to follow. And I should have thought of that, of giving you some consequential directive when you started here. But my experience with that was when I, the first time I ever talked to Mr. Mailer, I didn't know who was interviewing whom. I thought he was interviewing me to make sure we were going to be good enough for him to take our job here. You had such significant accomplishments, both that we see visibly and the things that we don't see behind the scenes, that it's really, there's no way to even begin to list them. Everything about our town is different since you've been here. The only thing that I would, that has stood out to me as extremely significant is the unity that you've brought to our community. Prior to your coming to us and helping us, we didn't have that, this sense of all one town that we do now. And for that, I really want to thank you.
I'm Anna Marie Ventura. I live at 148 Main Street. And I'm just here as an ordinary citizen. I've lived in North Andover for 23 years now. And because I work and commute into Boston, I don't come to many meetings until recently and never got to a town meeting on time, didn't read anything. So I don't think I even knew we had a Town Manager, let alone a new one, seven years ago, whenever you came in. But I do know that through, you know, an exhausted stupor when I got to that town meeting, that something was different. And I was impressed with you and even more impressed at subsequent meetings with how, as this man said, unified things became and how much more organized the presentations were and how much had been done prior to the meetings. So I just want to wish you good luck and thank you. And I'm not easily impressed, but I was impressed, so. Thanks.
Any other public comments? Okay. I thought we would take the opportunity now to say whatever words we might have to carry on with the comments to Andrew, if anyone has any comments they want to make.
Well, I'll start. And I think, you know, there's been a lot of comments that have already made that I would echo. I think, you know, what has happened in the last seven years, the plans that, you know, a lot of times we have plans and they sit on the shelf and they don't get executed. But I think, you know, you were a catalyst in taking those plans off the shelf. And your plan and build process has worked tremendously for this town. And as Mr. DeSalva said, the transformation and the transformative effects you've had on the town has been just unbelievable. Even just to get all of the town offices back together in one building, I don't even, you know, that is just such an amazing achievement to have that. So we all, you know, to come to Town Hall and see everybody that you need to do business with is right here. And it's just an amazing achievement. And all of the buildings we've got and we've accomplished over the last few years, and it's all under your leadership and your tutelage that we've been able to do that. So it's been amazing. And for me personally, it's been very gratifying and to become not only a colleague, but also a friend of yours. So I really appreciate everything you've done over these last seven years. And we are going to miss you, I'm not going to lie. But I hope you, you know, I know you're moving on to a great position. And we wish you the best of luck. And thank you from the bottom of our hearts for everything you've done here in North Andover. It's been just amazing.
I struggle with change. And I struggle with change, especially in a setting that seems to work really well. And right now, I think that this is a setting that we all are incredibly comfortable entering, not just every Monday, but every single day. And me personally, as a Selectman and as a resident in town, I appreciate that you understand that we enter this role as community volunteers. And there's a huge amount of learning that goes into being a Selectman, a School Committee member, Town Moderator even. And you really balance the role of mentor well with also balancing the role of our responsibility to residents. And I want to say thank you for proving yourself to be so worthy of our trust because I think that it's not easy to earn the trust of a whole community. And what you've heard tonight, and what you're, I'm sure, going to continue hearing is that you earned our trust. And that is what made it very easy for us to continue serving as Selectmen and easy to deliver, I think, on what the people of this community expect. In fact, this is a compliment, but you spoiled us. And I have faith that we'll continue to follow the path that you've laid out for us. And I think we'll continue to be able to apply the lessons and guidance that you offered us individually as members of this town government and to our staff in helping them be as effective as possible. I just, I want to say thank you. And I don't think that I can find the words to accurately convey that any better than thank you.
We go to the Super Bowl every year. As far as I'm concerned, with you as our Town Manager. And I think that's really the feeling that we have here, which is that you've created the community essence. And as, you know, citizens here have said, and my fellow Selectmen, and that really, although there's a lot of incredible amount of intellectual capacity, and we talk about these processes and so much, there's so much from the heart that's underneath it all, that that's what's really driving it. And you gave your heart, have given your heart to this community. And much like children going off to college, it's, you know, the baton gets handed off and we move on to the next great thing for both us and for you. And we're just so pleased to have that experience. And thank you for sharing that with us. Learned a tremendous amount with you here. But I think as a community, you've enlightened us all about what we can be and to get us thinking about what the possibilities are and actualizing them. And that is a phenomenal skill. And our state will be better for the position that you're in. I have full confidence in it. And I'm excited to see that happen for you and for us. So thank you, Andrew. Thank you.
Well, I'm one of the few that has been doing this a while. Started on the Finance Committee. So I do know the hard days that we used to have. I mean, it was literally, literally, the departments would be saying, who has stamps? Because they ran out of money. No joke. We ran deficits. And it's been a long haul. But, and I've always been proud of my town. I've always loved my town. But you've made it really easy to be really proud of all that we've accomplished. I feel as though we all have some bragging rights. And it's really kind of fun to exercise them, especially when you're with people. How did you guys do that? Or how did this? Your town is so beautiful. Your town is so. For all of that, I say thank you. And I know we did well. For any of you that know his dear wife, Paula. So you can often judge a man by the woman they marry. And she is the best. And you have wonderful daughters. And she should be very proud of everything that you've done for our town. Thank you.
I guess I will wrap up saying I agree with everything that's been said tonight. It's interesting. I got involved in the town government. I've lived in North Andover for 11 years and didn't get involved in, you know, these boards and committees until several years after moving here. So I didn't, I wasn't involved during these hard times that people have mentioned. And I certainly know of them happening. But I really became involved and started paying closer attention during your tenure. So I've only kind of known the goodness. And I credit that with getting, making me be interested and getting me involved because I wanted to be a part of all the great things that I know you were doing. And I especially appreciate and respect your very deep knowledge and preparation for any topic that we might, anything, as Phil mentioned, there's a learning curve, especially for someone like me who had not been involved. And no matter what question I asked you, you always had an answer. There was always a depth of information, which I very much appreciate. And appreciate you helping me get up to speed as I took on this role. And it's been such a pleasure to serve in this capacity with you. So I thank you very much for that, for the leadership that you've provided. And as well, I want to comment on the unity and the collaborative nature of everyone that works for the town of North Andover. It's just been, it's what makes us all successful, I think, and so appreciated. So with that, I also have a plaque from the Board of Selectmen, presented to Andrew Mailer in recognition of his outstanding service as Town Manager for the town of North Andover from December 16th, 2011 to February 15th, 2019. Plan the work, work the plan. North Andover Board of Selectmen, February 11th, 2019.
And look, they all match.
I think the Fields Committee gets the award.
They really, that was awesome. That is.
If I can, I guess I will take a shot at this if I can. So there's been a lot of eyes today. But we all know that in order to get done, what we've got done had to be about we, right? So if I stay on this topic too long, I'll get emotional. This has been my most enjoyable work experience. And that's been so much, not just about the outcomes, we've had some great outcomes, but it's been about sharing the ride with so many great people. Board of Selectmen, this group, and some of your predecessors, certainly before you. The staff, which is extraordinary, the people of the community who have been fantastic. And so we have accomplished a lot. There's a lot more to accomplish. The people are in place because this community is a fantastic place where people want to do great things. Our jobs as stewards is to make sure that we provide them the resources to get done those things that they want to get done. And I think we have had some good successes during the last seven years in that regard, and many more opportunities exist. So I am extremely fortunate to have spent the last seven years here and bittersweet about showing up someplace else on Monday or Tuesday. And it's not just a commute. And again, well, Monday's a holiday. Trying to figure out what to do. So I very much appreciate, I know I'm sort of understating it, but it's all about the people in the end. And you folks have given me a great experience, professional experience. And in the end, everything that has been done here has been a function of the support and the collegiality and the hard work of a group of people led by you folks every day. And so I very much appreciate that. And certainly appreciate the kind words. But I have tremendous, I feel very, very confident that the folks that work here every day, which are an extraordinary, extraordinary group. We are blessed with the best team anywhere. And I'm very, very confident that the work that we've begun will continue for a long time to come. Appreciate it.
All right.
On to something else.
On to, on to some business. Yeah, I'll let those of you who are planning to walk out. So the next item on our agenda is the interviews with the search consultants. So as just a recap for the public, we voted, we would hire an executive search consultant. We issued an RFP. We had three responses. And we've got the three respondents here tonight to present to us. So the process we're going to follow is we'll have the respondent come up, give a short 10-minute or so pitch, overview of their proposal. Then we'll go take turns asking questions. We'll go down the table. Everyone, if I could ask you, just ask one question. If you need to have a follow-up, fine. And then we'll go around again until all of our questions are answered. But just want to make sure everyone gets equal opportunity to ask questions. So we'll start with Community Paradigm Associates.
First off, let me thank you for having us here tonight. And it is a bit awkward for us to follow all of that and say that we're going to get you someone as good as Andrew Mailer. But certainly, that's our, that's our hope. My name is Bernie Lynch. And I'm joined with Sharon Flaherty of Community Paradigm. And, you know, I think our proposal basically speaks for itself in terms of the process that we use. Our process is very similar to the process that's outlined within your request for quotes. We essentially come into the town. Generally, we come in and we meet with you as individual board members. We meet with department heads and staff. And what we try to do, and this varies a little bit from the scope that was outlined in your RFQ, is we meet with the public. In your RFQ, you have the public participating a little bit later in the process, after the resumes have come in, after the screening committee has started its work. We actually prefer to do that at the outset so that we're informed as to what the thoughts are regarding the citizenry with regards to the needs of the community, the type of person that you're seeking for a town administrator or town manager. And we use that to help us build a field and then help evaluate that field. So that's what we do. Then we go out, we actively recruit, we advertise, we bring in candidates. We work with your screening committee or search committee to evaluate those people that apply in order to determine the best possible candidates to bring forward to the Board for final selection. So that's really it in a nutshell. And I think each one of the firms that you'll be looking at tonight, and even if you weren't using a firm, you'd go about the process essentially the same way, perhaps not with as much at the front end. What I've handed out is, and I'm going to use that as sort of a guide to speak to the, selling ourselves, making our pitch to the Board and to the town as to why we think that we'd be able to serve the town of North Andover very well. As I said, my name is Bernie Lynch. I've got almost 40 years, I have almost 40 years' experience in municipal government, a good portion of it right here in the Merrimack Valley. I was the Town Manager of the town of Chelmsford, the first Town Manager there for about 20 years. And I was the City Manager for the city of Lowell for almost eight years, which doesn't sound like a long time, except it was the city of Lowell. So that's, that's pretty impressive, actually. You have to go back to the 1950s to find someone that was there as long as I was able to serve. So I feel, I'm very persistent. So hopefully, you'll see that as a positive. Sharon has extensive experience in communications and marketing. She's, has a background in journalism and working with financial institutions and now working with me and the other people of Community Paradigm in assembling the documentation and the information to assist us in marketing the town of North Andover to possible candidates. So, and then we have other people that work with us, most specifically that would be assigned to this project would be Rocco Longo. He's the former Town Administrator of the town of Marshfield. But he's also served in a number of other capacities here in the state. So we have extensive municipal experience in working with the Boards of Selectmen, with city councils, with town councils. And we understand the role of the manager. We understand the role of the Board of Selectmen, as well as how municipalities function and what the needs of municipalities are. So we think that's important. As I said, Sharon's background is in communications and journalism. She served a number of years as a reporter and an editor of a number of newspapers covering municipal government. So she brings that perspective to this as well. Obviously, Sharon can speak for herself. But we only have 10 minutes, so I'm going to try to focus in on this. So we do have that. The other part that I think we bring to the table is a very extensive and current network. Being in the business for almost 40 years, we know every manager, every assistant manager in the state. In addition to that, you know, we've been very active, all of us, in the Managers Association. And so we know not only everyone in the state, but we know the strengths and weaknesses that they bring and that they're interested in perhaps coming to North Andover. I also, and Rocco as well, in fact, Rocco is currently the Program Coordinator for the MMA Suffolk Local Government Certificate Program. I recently served in that capacity, but pushed that over to Rocco now in terms of the program that is really designed to bring new people into the management, local government management world. We've now graduated, and Denise has actually We've now graduated, and Denise is actually one of the faculty there as well, in teaching in the certificate program. It's been a very successful program in terms of finding talent in the communities to replace the generation of managers that are now leaving the business. An interesting number is that over the course of the last three years, over one-third of the municipalities here in Massachusetts have changed their chief administrative, chief executive officer. It's a very competitive market right now. That's why we're trying to bring new people into the business. This Suffolk and MMA program is designed to help that along. So we know many of those people that are out there that are looking to make that next move in their career. We're active in the International City and County Management Association. And the fact that we've been in business now for about five years doing these types of searches has given us the opportunity to build a database of managers, potential managers here in Massachusetts and outside of Massachusetts that might be interested in this position. We literally have hundreds of resumes and names of people that are interested in getting into this type of position. And some are better than others perhaps, and obviously we want to bring the best possible candidates to you, but we have that network of people that we can draw upon to actively go out and search and recruit to apply for the position. One of the things that I think we do better, I'll say that we're very proud of, is the position profile. That is prepared as a result of the work that we do at the beginning of this process. When we meet with staff, when we meet with department heads, meet with the board members and meet with the public, we gather that information to really put in place a very robust position profile that can be used to market this position to potential candidates. I think if you look at the, the profile, I think we gave you the town of Weston, the profile that we developed for, for them, you can see it's just filled with information that really gives candidates an opportunity to understand the community, understand the needs of the community and the values of those communities as they make the decision to apply. So we put a lot of work into that because we feel it's worth the work and worth the effort right up front. It's, anybody can put just an ad out there, but it's really understanding the community that we think is important for us to do, to find you the best candidates and also to solicit applicants. As I said, I noticed in your RFQ that you included a section on citizen engagement. We feel that that's crucial. And we've included that, we don't just, we don't just respond to RFQs or RFPs that include that, we always recommend that a community do that. And if you look at some of the other searches that we've done, specifically the town of Amherst, the town of Wellesley, the town of Weston, and you can go through pretty much all of our clients, we have included citizen engagement, community engagement as part of that. We include it at the front end and oftentimes we include it at the back end to allow the residents, the citizens, the business people of the community to participate in the process of evaluating the, the candidates coming forward. Because of our municipal experience and our willingness and interest in always giving our opinions, we advise beyond recruitment. We not only bring you candidates, but we will work with the board in terms of what the appropriate onboarding process would look like, what type of strategies might be put in place to put together, for instance, a strategic plan for the candidate, once they're appointed, to come into the office and work closely with the board and with the, with the departments. And issues that arise during the recruitment process, again, they're not generally recruitment issues perhaps, but they're areas that we feel we can bring our expertise to offer information and advice to the community. We do customize. We're not just, we don't just use a boilerplate and stick with that. I think, again, if you talk to any of our clients, we have, right now, over the last three years, we have over 30 communities here in Massachusetts that we've provided these services to, they will tell you that they shifted gears at various points in time and we were more than ready, more than willing to work with them in perhaps assembling the process a little bit differently to meet specific issues that arose. Recently, we completed a search for the town of Brewster. In fact, they're signing the contract or approving the contract tonight with their, with their candidate. And during that process, we did make adjustments along the way to make sure that the needs of the town and the needs of the board were met, to, to make sure that they had the best possible candidate. I include this, I said we don't use boilerplate, but this is our standard handout that we give, and I note that we sell the town and the position. Some communities are more difficult to sell than others. Things have happened in those communities, you know, that are issues for potential candidates. I don't think there's going to be too much of a problem in selling the town of North Andover, so I probably will skip over that one. But that's something that, if you're talking to other communities that might be having trouble, you might be able to refer them to us because we are able to find the silver lining in any situation and be able to go out and find good candidates for that. Again, I don't think that's as big an issue here. And then lastly, and this is really sort of ties in with all of this, our recent experience with the market. We've been the most active recruiting firm in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts over the last three years. As I said, over a third of the communities have hired new town administrators, new town managers. We've been involved in about one-third of those. And that's keeping in mind that many communities, the smaller communities opt to do this on their own. But we've been involved in more than any other recruiting firm out there in terms of helping to hire managers and administrators in municipalities. So we think that that gives us, again, a great network of people, a great understanding of the market. And I think our, the success that we've had really is a result of the work that we're able to do in partnership with the communities that we have an opportunity to work with. So that's my pitch, and I'm happy to take whatever questions you want to throw our way.
Thank you. We'll start with Selectmen Valencourt, if you have any questions. Sorry.
All right, well, first of all, thank you both for coming tonight and, and for submitting your RFP. We really appreciate that. I guess mine is kind of a follow-up on the community engagement piece. I really, you know, I love, I love that part of it, that you are very focused and very adamant about having community engagement. So we just went through a process for our master plan, and we had quite a bit of community engagement during that time. And we had a lot of citizens show up and give their input, and, you know, they, that, all that input had to be obviously combed through and summarized. So I guess my question is, what are your process for engaging the community, getting that input, and then how do you use that input once you've gone through it all? And what, what is the process you follow to do that?
Sure. The, generally, we, we manage community forums is the simplest way of doing that. That's what we've done in every community. Some communities, we've done multiple community forums. So for instance, again, we prefer to do it at the front end, have that input that really educates us and informs us, and I think informs the board. Clearly, you have a finger on the pulse of the town. And your screening committee likely has that same finger on the pulse. But to hear the residents participate in the process and tell you what the issues are that they see and what they would like to see as a manager coming forward. So oftentimes, we'll hold a forum at the, at the library, for instance, or a senior center, or we may hold one during the day to reach one group of population, the population, then another in the evening to reach another part of the population. We've held them on Saturdays, again, to let them participate in the process. We also make ourselves available for email correspondence. We set up email accounts to bring citizen, some people don't necessarily have the opportunity to attend forums but want to participate in the process. The way we use that information is to prepare the position profile. Much of what's included in that position profile are the responses that we hear at those community forums. I should note that at those community forums, generally, I facilitate those, I moderate the discussion and answer questions about how, what the process looks like, what the market is like. But mostly, we're there to listen and hear what people have to say and then use it to prepare the profiles. And then the last part of it is the, the citizen engagement that we have at the, at the tail end, where we might have, again, a forum where your three finalists may come in, assuming three, you, you know, there may be a different number. But you'll have them be available to just meet and greet people, or where they may have an opportunity to respond in a formal setting to answer questions. How that information is used, there's a couple of different things. One is they can talk to you as their elected board members at the, right before your decision or near your decision. What we did in Brewster most recently was a little bit different, again, customizing it, is we had a, a survey where people could write comments and, how many comments, how many surveys, I think we, probably?
Forty.
Forty residents sat in that forum and sat through part of the interviews and provided us with their feedback in an anonymous way, which we then assembled into a document that we could pass on to the board. That way, there was, there was that anonymity, and yet it was done in a way that gave the, the board a little bit of information as to what people were thinking. What I would recommend you not do for citizen engagement at the tail end is something that another community has, another community I'm aware of has done, and that's basically they set up a debate between the finalists. I would recommend, I would recommend, I would recommend against that, so that was not our search.
So I guess the challenge is, how do you get folks to come out? I mean, you know, that's, that's, to me, you know, we had a good participation tonight because we had a special evening, but for the most part, if you look around this room, there's maybe one newspaper reporter here and that's about it. So I guess it's how do you get people excited to come out, you know?
Well, we use, we use whatever really works for the town. We do press releases, we do social media announcements, cable TV announcements that can be used by the community. And it, it varies. I mean, we get, you know, some communities, Amherst probably had a total of 60 people participating over four different forums that we did. That was a little, the number was probably more than we needed to do. But the little town of Northfield, a population of 5,000, I think we had 40 people come to that meeting. Many of our other forums don't necessarily get a, a number like that, but, so it really varies, but community by community.
Okay. You have a question?
I wrote it in the right way. So I don't know if this is a better question to ask at the beginning or the, the end, so I'm just going to throw it out there because it was my first question, where you have amongst the, in the response packet, you had listed a number of communities you've worked with, including a half dozen that you're currently working with to identify administrators or managers for their communities. I still think North Andover's the best, but how do you, I mean, it sounds silly because of course you're going to have multiple clients, but how do you balance that inherent competition between what you've identified as a very small pool of really qualified people and the fact that you're, you have several different communities all looking for the same type of person?
True.
I think, you know, what I'm trying to ask, I want to understand that.
Yeah, and it's, it's really only happened, it's only, it happened once. I, I think that we've really run into a situation like that. There are people that are being-
Where an applicant was interested in multiple communities?
In, well, in two, two communities simultaneously.
Okay.
And basically, you know, we, we presented that candidate to both communities and they went through the process and they ultimately, the community that moved faster was able to, to get that candidate. And I advised both communities along the way that, because there was, that particular candidate was also looking at another community that we weren't involved with. But I was able to talk to those communities and let them know that that was happening. You know, we do have the situation, I think, all of us that do this type of work are going to have the situation where we're going to be doing recruitment simultaneously. We happen to have a good number right now, none up in this area, which geography plays a role in this as well.
So I looked up most of the communities that you're looking at, and it's on, on the agenda for anyone watching at home and following.
Sure.
I would say that we're pretty different. Is that, would that be an accurate reflection that we are, an applicant for a community like ours is probably not someone who would be in contention even with the existing-
No, no. Most of them are down in smaller communities, southern Massachusetts or out west right now. The community that we're doing closest to here right now is the city of Methuen. We're recruiting for a chief administrative and finance officer. So that's a different type of position than we would be looking for here. We've done a number of communities similar to North Andover, I would say. You know, we did Natick, Wellesley, Weston, Linfield, trying to think of some others down that way, but, yeah. So it's the good-sized communities that are a particular type of community. I think it's helpful to be, actually, for us to be as active as we are because it does allow us to build up that network of people that we, we can bring to the, to the table.
Which I think is a strength. My issue is if, if you're bringing them to multiple tables at the same time. That's what I wanted to, I think it would be a good job explaining.
Right. And, and again, you're not necessarily going to be, someone that's be interested in the position in North Andover, well, let me, let me change that. Someone that's interested in some of the other positions that we're looking at tend to be, right now, tend to be a little bit smaller or a little bit different in form of government. So I don't see where any of those are going to interfere with the type of candidate that we've been bringing to North Andover.
My question, first question is similar but different to this question, which is, if you have 10 ongoing searches, or eight or 10 ongoing searches right now, forgetting the conflict that might exist in the, in the candidates, do you feel that you have the time to focus on our search? And would the people assigned to our search also be working on all eight other searches or 10 other searches? You as the executive, you know, are you participating in all of the searches? Is Miss Flaherty?
We participate in all the, in all the searches, and we bring in other people as needed to assist with certain elements. But if you, if, if you make the decision to use Community Paradigm in your search, you will get me and you will get Sharon, and then other people as needed along the way to, to assist in the process.
And you don't foresee a jeopardy to our timeline because you're doing other things and we have to wait a week because-
Some of our searches are wrapping up.
Right.
So those are going to fall off and ease the time, and there are different time constraints during different periods of searches. And there are some communities who want their search stretched out, you know, for whatever reasons in the community, you know, they may have a manager who's not leaving for a while, but they want to get started, but they want a slower process. Others want a, a very quick process. So we know that this fits within our bandwidth.
Okay.
Sort of a, a different question. And I think about it in terms of, there are trends, right? Every industry has trends, right? And, you know, the analogy I think about is, you know, offenses, right, you know? And talk to me about what the trend is in the industry and how you are tuned into it, whatever that is, and how does that impact the process of us making the right selection for today and looking ahead to tomorrow?
Mm-hmm. I think I, if I, you know, having been a manager, this has been my, this has been my life really for a good, long time. I think about the trends that are happening in municipal government. Certainly, one of the trends that we spoke of right up at the front end was greater levels of citizen participation and community engagement. That, there was a point in time when that was really conflicted with the, the sense of what a manager should be doing. Managers were supposed to be more of the green eye shade, you know, type of business where they'd stay in and work on spreadsheets. Much more now, the, the notion that managers are out there engaging the community. If you look, and then if you look, you know, sort of historically, the first managers were all engineers. The next wave were accountants. The next wave, I would say, were probably planners. And I know that that's where I got my start, was as a planning community development. And I know that that's where I got my start, was as a planning community development. The latest trend, I think, if you, if you were to try to describe it, is more of the candidates that focused on being of community leadership, community engagement, but also at the same time, very much dependent upon the notion of utilizing data for decision-making. You know, many communities now are putting in place, I know that we did it in Lowell when I was the manager there, a stat program where we use people that, we brought, we put together a team of people that would go in and analyze the operations, not just looking at data alone in a vacuum, but using that data along with a team-building approach to understand what that data meant and how you could improve the operations and how you could relate more with the community. In fact, our first data analyst for that stat program is now the town manager in the town of Ashland. And a number of other people have gone through that program in different communities and are now starting to move into manager positions across the state. So I think that, in fact, the individual who was involved with me in setting that up to start with, that program took the, you know, my direction and sort of moving that program forward for the city is now the town administrator in the neighboring town of Middleton. So I think use of data, community engagement, having those other financial management skills and understanding planning and land use, but it's that, using those two, I think right now, I think are the greatest trends that I see out there.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Hi. Nice to see you again. We've met at different conferences and things in the past. So my question is, and, you know, my board has given you wonderful questions, so mine's a little bit more of the nuts and bolts on the screening committee because in order for us to have a great town manager, we need a great, well-functioning screening committee. However, many people have never done this before. So my question to you is, how do you make sure that the screening committee works collaboratively, that their personalities all kind of fall into line? In any committee, we know there'll be some people who'll take a very strong and aggressive approach and some will be more laid back. So how do you manage the screening committee and just along with that, I'll just ask this, will you be attending all the meetings and all the interviews with the screening committee or do you sometimes leave them to say, do the interviews on their own? So it's a two-part question, the same subject.
I, I won't say that I don't trust them, because I do, but I do think we bring value to the screening committees by being there. So we will be at all of the screening committee meetings, we'll be at all of the interviews. I suppose unless they ask us not to come. But we think we bring value to the process. We work with the screening committee on developing questions, we work with the screening committee in looking at different evaluation tools. And, you know, I like to think, I like to say sometimes that we're sort of the municipal manager whisperers, if you will. We, we know what managers, when managers go for an interview and ask certain questions or give certain responses, we generally know what's going on in their head when they ask or say those things. We also, though, have built up a relationship with the committee members so that we understand what their perspectives are and what's driving them to ask certain questions or to interpret certain answers in a, in a given way. So we see ourselves as a bridge to help each side understand what each is saying. And again, given the municipal experience that we have, you know, I'm not sure who you have in mind for your screening committee. They may or may not have municipal experience, but we'd be able to convey or answer any questions that they may have regarding candidates and their municipal issues for them so that they fully understand what they're being told. But we, we work with screening committees. I think in all of our searches, we've, there's only been, I think, three or four that have chosen not to use screening committees. I find them to be very helpful, very positive benefit for the, for the community to have that type of citizen involvement in the process. They give a different perspective and they understand the community. We don't understand the community, wouldn't pretend to understand the community as well as the citizens do, but we think that we, we can bring something to them and they obviously bring up quite a bit to the process. And I think one of the questions that you had in your RFQ was, it was an interesting one, how do we make sure that all voices on the screening committee are heard? And again, there's going to be a chair, but I like to believe that we provide a comfort level to all of the committee members so that they, they feel free to ask the questions that need to be asked of each other and of the candidates.
Can I just ask one quick follow-up? Is, may I ask, why, why do you feel that there should be a need for a chair of the screening committee?
Well, I think, I think there has to be, every committee needs a chair of some sort. I, I don't feel that, I've been a chair of a screening committee, I was the chair of the Chelsea screening committee myself. They, the city of Chelsea asked me to come in and serve in that role, but I think that, you know, that there should be a citizen on, of the committee that's the lead in terms of the necessary presentation of candidates to the board. Obviously, I will be here as, for that as well, but it's a, it's a citizen committee, it needs a citizen that serves as the person in charge, if you will.
Okay.
And, you know, in charge doesn't mean they're ordering people about as much as they're serving that opening of the meeting, closing the meeting, accepting the motions and so on.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a two-part question. It's in general about the industry, but also more specifically to paradigm. So one-third of the town managers over the past, town managers, town administrators have turned over in the past three years.
Right.
What do you attribute that to? Like, what's the overarching theme for why that happens? Is it just, is it unusual for a town manager to stay as long as you and Mr. Mailer have historically stayed? I mean, I know you apologized for the eight years, but that's a long time considering. So is there some underlying reason or is it all just more?
Sure. It's generational.
Okay.
Primarily generational. You know, it's, I was speaking with someone today about this. In the, the area around, if you, just, just to give an example, sort of geographically because it's so, so dramatic, in the area of Route 128 and Route 3, Burlington, Lexington, Concord's have opened now, Acton, Weston, Wayland, Wellesley?
Bedford.
Bedford? Thank you. Have all opened within the last year or so, and all been filled. All of them retired. And so, yeah, I, I had a, the reason I have that number off the top of my head, and it's not an exact number, but I was speaking to the Selectments Association back in October down at Devon's, the Fall Conference, and going to talk about the recruiting process, I, I started thinking, you know, I always talk about the big turnover that's happening. So I actually went through the MMA handbook and went through every community and said, okay, that changed, that changed, that changed, they changed, and went through all 351, took off the cities for the most part because I, most of them have mayors, although in the last three years, Lowell, Worcester, and Cambridge have all changed. Worcester's actually a little bit farther back, but, but I went through all the others. And it's, the number I came up with is about 102, and if you take off the cities and take off the small towns that don't have someone, you're down into the 270 range, and they've all, and most of them have been generational. The people have retired. There's such a large group of baby boomers that are leaving the business. And that's not just happening here in Massachusetts, it's happening everywhere.
So it's a tougher than distance of time to judge because you've only been open for three years, but what's the retention rate of paradigm with the people they've placed?
So far, everyone is, is still in place.
Every person that you've placed is still?
Yes. Yep, yep.
Firstly, I forgot to say this in the beginning, but thank you for this very thorough proposal.
Thank you.
I was very appreciative of the very detailed response, and I really feel like I have an understanding of your process, which I very much appreciate.
Certainly.
So thank you for that. In one of the sections where you were talking about the screening process, you mentioned the use of assessment tools as deemed appropriate, and I was wondering if you could share an example of assessment tool that you think is valuable that you might recommend to us, just as an example?
Only if you hire us.
Fair enough.
No, I think, I think one of the assessment tools that we, you know, we, I think we gave you some examples in there of some essay questions that we've used in communities. Those, I think those, very frankly, have, are interesting and they're a nice way of sort of winnowing the field down a bit maybe, but I actually found the most useful tool that we've used so far was, we used it in Amherst and we used it in variations in some other places as well, is we had, we had the candidates come forward with a policy proposal or a project proposal that they had made in their prior position. Provide that, the materials related to that to the board. We use that specifically with the select board out in Amherst, when they still had a select board in Amherst before they moved to a council. That was the challenge in Amherst, by the way, is they were moving to a council forum and it wasn't clear whether it was going to be a mayor or a manager, and getting people to apply for that position was somewhat of a challenge, but we did it successfully. But what we did is we had them come in, provide the materials, and then present their arguments as to why they were making that policy proposal, why they were making that particular project proposal, and then what the outcome was and what lessons they learned as a result of that. So some of the policy proposals were not necessarily accepted, or the projects did not move forward. What did they learn as a result of that, about how they would handle things differently moving forward? That tool also enabled us to see what their thought process was like and their communication skills in terms of written, in terms of presentation. So I found that to be the most useful tool, evaluative tool that we've viewed a lot so far.
Again, the proposal is very complete, so it took a lot of the, you know, the questions out. So what is the question we haven't asked? What is the thing that we-
Oh, I hate that question.
You're good with it.
Right? I mean, you've been through this plenty of times, so what is it that we haven't addressed with you that we should or could?
And the one you don't want to answer.
No, I'll, I'll give you a little latitude on that one.
Those would be the same. Yeah, I really, in all honesty, I can't think of anything that, that you haven't asked. I mean, I think the question you asked about how we juggle the different communities and people going, the different, the candidates that might be looking at multiple communities, it was a great question. You know, that's, but I do think that that's a, an area that it's, it's a benefit to have someone that knows all of the different potential applicants that are out there and what the market looks like. I think that's the most important, one of the most important skills we bring as well as our municipal experience we have, but I really can't, I'm scrambling here to think of a question that I, I would ask if I were in your seat, and I, I can't think of one, and I apologize.
No, no, fair enough. I appreciate that. Thank you.
I think one thing that it's important to, to think about too is that you want to find someone who has a real passion for municipal management and not just for municipal management in general, but also specific to North Andover. You want to make sure it's the person who has the right fit, who wants to be here, but also finds this as their career, their field, it's what they want to do, it's what they prepared for throughout their career.
Thank you.
Well, I might be asking you the question you don't, you don't want to ask, but I'm, I'm sure you'll be fine with it. So there is a process in where we want everything to be equal and fair. How do you handle when someone, the call, the whisper in the ear kind of thing, gee, I'm interested in that, or they, they contact you outside the process? How would you, if you've ever had that happen, how would you handle that?
I guess I'm not sure, I guess I'm not sure what you mean by outside the process.
So we have a definite process, and say we get, or that you find a member of the committee who's sort of done something somewhat outside the process. They bring in another candidate at the last minute, that kind of thing.
Well-
That's probably the question you don't want, it's awkward, but I think it's important that we would know how you would handle-
Sure, sure. In terms of that, there is a, there is very much a, a process of how these resumes are received and passed on. And I'm glad, actually, that you brought that up because that was one other issue that I made note of in my, in our proposal. The RFQ speaks of handing, having all of the resumes given to the board at a point in time. That's problematic. Once they're handed to this board, they are public record. When you're doing that, that takes away all confidentiality of potential applicants, and without that confidentiality, your pool will shrink dramatically. The, it's important that there be a process, and the process is that the resumes are provided to us. We go out and we solicit them as well as just take them in from people that reply to the advertisements or the postings that we do. We then batch those into different categories that we pass on to the screening committee. The screening committee sees all of them because the screening committee can see them in executive session. Once they go to the board, anything that goes to the board is a public record, but screening committee can do it without that occurring. And so those are the only applications that are seen though, those that come through that process. If a member of the committee suddenly shows up with an application, then they didn't go through the process. Now, that would be up to the committee, I suppose, to decide how that's going to be handled, if they suddenly found someone. But I would certainly frown upon that because there is supposed to be a legitimate, detailed process that would be used. The only problem that I've had with a screening committee is in spite of our hammering home, and this has only happened in a couple of places, but in spite of our hammering home the importance of that confidentiality, members of the screening committee have taken it upon themselves to reach out to a friend in another community and ask, what do you hear about Andrew Mailer? And that word can spread quickly, particularly if they're asking people who are staff members of that other community, their nephew, their cousin, their high school friend is employed by another town in which the manager has applied. That destroys that confidentiality and that's how you end up losing candidates and jeopardizing people's careers.
Exactly. Yes, and exactly.
And so I've, I have been put in the position with that of having to speak to members of the committee so that they understand the repercussions of that.
Okay. Thank you.
I think that our proposal did not say that we wanted to get all the resumes. Did it? Well, anyway, my, my thinking was they would go to this, but you're fine with all the resume, you receive all the resumes and then you share them with your commentary with the screening committee?
Yes.
And give the screening committee guidance on how they should be acting.
Yes, they see, they see, I put them into, as I say, I put them into, generally do three batches. Qualified, not qualified, and what I call is interesting. People that may not have the specific backgrounds, but people that are a little bit out of the box, that may have some experiences that- box, that may have some experiences that would be applicable to the position and that we might want to, we might want to take a look at. But generally, it's, the pool comes out of the qualified group.
Okay. Any other questions?
My final question, the timeline. Do you think this is a doable timeline? I mean, starting tonight, we have another 12, 13 weeks to do, to get this all done. Given, you know, everything you've talked about tonight and the resume screening, and do you think this is...
It's aggressive.
It's aggressive.
It's aggressive. Generally, and I think your RFQ actually speaks of a 16-week period, but it also has Some of the dates may shift, but if you look at the timeline that I've put there, it actually completes by May 15th or thereabouts in time for, within that, and that's the 16th week.
Yeah.
And we've done it shorter. In Norwood, we did it in 12 weeks, because they told us they needed it done in 12 weeks. And we did it. We did it in Linfield in, I think, under 12 weeks, because they wanted it done before the end of the year, the calendar year, and that, but what that requires, in order for that to take place, is the cooperation and flexibility of your screening committee primarily. They need to be able to meet, as needed, to review the resumes, to do the interviews. And so, what helps that along for everyone is if those dates can be set up well in advance. So, if you were to, if you were to hire us, what we would hope to, after you appoint your screening committee, is be in touch with them, set up those first dates, and then be able to, and hopefully, they have the flexibility to meet during a day, so we can bring all the candidates in during the day, or on a Saturday. We've done interviews on Sundays. It's not something most people like to do, including us, but whatever it takes to get that done. But our goal would be to have this project, this process complete by the middle, and when I say complete, you having chosen someone and a contract probably signed by the middle of May.
So, I feel like sometimes it's tough to segue between the questions, because they're all things that we want to know, but they don't all necessarily jive one after the other. And so, this is more of a philosophical question than I think. I would expect the search committee would also ask you, which is, we always hear that in New England, especially Massachusetts, has a unique form of government where we employ town meeting.
Right.
And it just, it's, what sparked this question was I had reviewed the resumes of all the people affiliated with Paradigm, and Mr. Longo started out in West Virginia. Where it's led me is just, what's your perception of applicants coming from outside of the state and their ability to integrate into Massachusetts state government, especially the town meeting forum, and especially those folks coming from outside New England?
Yeah. You know, I think, I think it can work very successfully. Obviously, it's going to depend upon, there are a couple of candidates that we've run across that are locked into the council manager form of government with this...
Which we don't have.
Instead of town meeting. But if you look at, you mentioned Mr. Longo, Mr. Heckablaeker, who's also, I don't, I can't recall whether we included, Peter was the town manager in Redding.
You did the first town manager.
He came out of New Jersey. He was there for close to 30 years. We mentioned, Andrew mentioned Bedford. Rick Reed came out of Maryland, was there for 30 years. It can be very, people can make that transition very easily. So, you can look outside of the state. Yes.
I don't have another question.
One quick one, and I believe in a lot of checks and balances in a process like this. So, would you be opposed if our board chose our own background inspection company, separate from who you might recommend?
No, no.
Okay.
No, in fact, again, I'll, because one that we just completed was Brewster. We did, we do ICORs, and then we do reference checks, but oftentimes, we'll recommend to a community that they make their decision, their appointment contingent upon successful negotiation of a contract and a more comprehensive background check. And we use Creative Services to do that. We've used them in a number of communities. But in the town of Brewster, they asked if they could just use their police department, and they used their police department, and that was fine with us.
Okay, great. I'm all set.
Okay. Great.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I mean, I think this is a learning experience for us, so I'm glad to have that opportunity, because I think a lot of what we were asking, we wouldn't necessarily get to ask in another type of setting, because, I mean, he's going to sit down, or she's going to sit down with the search committee. Hypothetically, we wouldn't get to ask these questions of...
That's what I'm saying. That's just checks and balances.
That's what I'm saying. That's just checks and balances. Just to make sure. Don't be sorry. Hey, how are you? Nice to see you. Congratulations. We're all leaving in a perfect car. We're going to bring some... So, next up, we have the Edward J. Collins Center for Public Management. Thanks for whoever brought those. Pass them down, she says. So, if you guys could just give us a short overview of your proposal, and then we'll go down the row and ask some questions.
Sure.
Thank you.
And looking at about 10 minutes?
Yes, sorry. Thank you.
So, my name is Robert Halpin, Bob Halpin. I'm a 40-year career professional in local government in Massachusetts, including five rather rewarding years here in North Andover in the late 1990s. Most recently, I concluded a term as town manager for the town of Framingham, and they made a decision last year to transition from a town former government to a city and elected a mayor to replace the town manager. So, it's been my good fortune to have joined the Collins Center for Public Management as of last summer, to join their, their team in promoting better government at all levels in Massachusetts, but a particular focus in local government. The Collins Center was created in 2009 to promote improved governance at all levels. The center, in the past 10 years, has distinguished itself in terms of providing assistance to local government in any area that you could imagine in local government management. We have professionals with extensive local government experience in municipal finance and budgeting, HR in personnel, including my associate here, Mary, policies, wage and compensation classification plans, strategic planning and management, overall governance in community engagement, and economic development. And the reason I mention that is that this is a center that was created by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, purposefully affiliated with McCormick School of Public Affairs at UMass Boston, to leverage the University of Massachusetts system, and in a lot of sense, is your center for public management, run out of the University of Massachusetts. That portfolio of consulting and projects and municipal management really creates not only a capability to look at just about any problem that a local government has encountered in Massachusetts, but it's also, as a result, resulted in an extensive network of contacts and local government affiliations. So, I'll talk to, allow Mary to talk to the logistics of the recruiting, but Mary's role as the lead practitioner on the recruiting aspect, so all of that scope and breadth of our competency in municipal government comes to bear in terms of recruiting for senior executives in local government, and Mary A. Carty is our lead practitioner in terms of recruiting. So, Mary will talk a little bit about the specific proposal in North Andover. Basically, the center is a public entity that promotes the improvement of local government management throughout Massachusetts.
Great. Well, how do you follow that? Thank you, Bob. Really, we're here to answer your questions. You've seen the proposal, but we'll, I'll touch on just a few things, really, a global view, and then we can answer any questions you have. We know you have a long evening. The, as Bob was just talking about, we have, we are the two main people assigned to this project. We always have two people who are dedicated to a project. There's plenty of people, you know, the Collins Center has 30 associates that we all are in touch with, but you want to know the people that you're dealing with. It will be the two of us. So, that's, we are the people who will be assigned here. I've been with the Collins Center one year, I'm one of the longest-serving, I was going to say oldest, and I've been with them nine years. Before that, I was fortunate to be home with my kids. Before that, I was the HR director in the town of Watertown for eight and a half years, Barnstable before then, and Wellesley before then, and Mass DPW. So, I'm dating myself. So, if you know when Mass DPW was, Mass DPW before it came highway, you know how long ago I was there. A long time ago, exactly. Governor Weld got elected and I lost my job, so, but I'm not bitter. So, our whole careers have been public sector, and I think that's what we bring, and we bring our passion. The reason we work for the public university is because of that. Certainly, we get paid, but we are a nonprofit, and it's our mission that drives us. It's our mission to help cities and towns work better. So, what we do is, we help you facilitate what you're looking for. We would never presume to sit here and tell you what you need. We want to ask you what you need, and that's what Bob's talking about. We want to get to know you and what you're looking for. Yes, we can help you write a job description, and we can help figure out what it is you're looking for, and then, once we get that direction, we know where to look. It would be presumptuous of us to say, "I know just what you need." No, I don't, not till we talk to you. So, the profile we gave you, I ran out of Millbury, but I think some of you have Drakeet and some of you have Millbury, and this is really the first task that we suggest you have. We want to know that you all are also on the same page. You'll be shocked to know sometimes boards don't always agree what they're looking for. So, what we want to do is make sure that you're the ones who are going to have to hire this person. It's what you want in that next person. Now, we do a lot of teasing out. We interview each one of you. We will hold, you know, listening sessions. We will meet with key department heads and other key stakeholders in the community. We typically like to bring any school representative, because that's a huge part of what you do, is you, you know, you educate your children. So, we get all of that input, and we come up with the draft profile. It's you who will vote on that final profile. We can give suggestions of what you might need or look for, or what we've seen in one of our 70 other recruitments that we've done through the years. And so, we have a sense of it, but it's this culture. Every town is different. So, often, you know, when we meet with boards, they say, "Oh, well, you know, the pool is thin." And, well, it's not thin for your town. Your town is different. It is unique, and each one has its own culture, which is what we get at when we create this. Once we do this, that's when the legwork, the direct recruiting, the advertising in the ICMA and the MMA, but as Bob mentioned, it's really our connections that serve us well. We look, we will ask you in your, in our interviews with you, "Do you want somebody who, is it an absolute that you have Massachusetts experience? Is it an absolute that they have to have municipal experience? Would you take a non-traditional candidate?" Those are all your decisions, not ours. We might have opinions and recommend to you different ideas and what is comparable, but we want to ask you those questions. Once we do that, we do the advertising, we recruit, we receive all of the resumes, and what we do is, we work with your screening committee. We don't lead your screening committee. Your screening committee leads your screening committee. We are there to facilitate their process. We are the technical advisors to that screening committee. Just like a good HR person is not telling a department head who to hire, they're helping that person hire who they want and what they're looking for, and pointing out some roadblocks along the way. We make sure that the processes are all legal. We take into account, we always give screening committees the hiring rules from the MCAD. We talk about, "Don't Google people." You know, let us do the background checks. So, we work with the screening committee to decide not who they think you should hire, but who you should interview. There's a big difference. You know, it's your lens that you want to, you want to use judgment for. We work with screening committees to say, "Who of these people do you want to spend an hour with?" We don't say, "Who do you think would be a good candidate for the job?" We say, "Who do you want to spend an hour with," so that you can figure out if they want to be moved, you want them to move to the next round. We share, and there's different theories on this, we subscribe to the theory that more information is better. We provide the screening committee with every candidate who applies. That doesn't mean we don't identify who's qualified or who meets the standards you have dictated. Too often, we've, when we first started nine, 10 years ago, we would screen them out and say, "Well, we have resumes of people who don't meet." First question is, "Well, who is it?" So, we always, we always provide all the resumes to the screening committee. We then facilitate however many interviews they want to do. We bring them in. We help formulate the questions based on what you said you're looking for in a profile. Once that's done, cream rises. We use a consensus method. We find the best decisions are consensus, because every person you're going to place on that screening committee views people with a different lens, and it's their lens that you want and their judgment. You can't assign a point to that. Many people, when we work with screening committees, they say, "Oh, well, you know, good, bad, you know, good, bad, ugly." We use, when we say to people, we ask, "Yes, no, maybe," and the question they're answering is, "Do you want to interview them?" Or, "Do you want to move them on?" And we really do it by consensus voting, and we come to consensus. Last thing I'll tell you, and then from there, we would check the references before they technically become finalists. We don't want anybody being in the public realm that hasn't passed a background check. We don't want that for you. We don't want that for candidates. So, we, once they move out of committee, we recommend that they are told they get moved to the next round, which means we'll check their references. They may not become a finalist. Last thing I'll tell you, and then, from there, we would check the references before they technically become finalists. We don't want anybody being in the public realm that hasn't passed a background check. We don't want that for you, we don't want that for candidates. So we, once they move out of committee, we recommend that they are told they get moved to the next round, which means we'll check their references. They may not become a finalist. What we do for the screening committee, I won't show you too close, because this is a real book. This was, we do a book of resumes for people, and we mail them. We try to avoid email, just because of the confidentiality is so important. And we provide, and this is a corresponding, we provide a table of all the candidates, which is a snapshot summary of the qualifications, the education, and their experience.
To the screen.
For the screening committee. So, that was quick. Any questions? We will go down. Go ahead.
I didn't see it in here, but I'm curious about involving the general public.
You said you involve, you know, you'll obviously ask the screening committee, school committee, but what about the general public? Do you have a process for involving and getting input, collecting input from the general public?
I mentioned a listening session, so...
Yeah, I would say that we would take our lead from your, from your desire on that, but I think that every community has a unique community setting, every town has a unique organizational setting, and I think really, we're particularly positioned to meet with the community, if you would like a broader community input into this process, that we're uniquely positioned to do that. I would say that that's a unique skill that I bring to the equation. We're also uniquely positioned to talk to your finance people, your public works people, your facilities people, your personnel people, because we talk to those people all the time in terms of the projects that we undertake across Massachusetts. So we would, we would broaden out that level of input to whatever degree, you know, the board feels is appropriate. But I do think you're hiring a senior executive into a unique community setting, and there's something to be said for doing that.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't want to waste my question, but can I ask a follow-up to Selectman Valancourt?
Hold on, hold on. I had a follow-up, people I held on to it.
No, you can ask a follow-up, then. I want you to ask...
We're going to make them think I'm the most rigid ass.
She is, but that's great, it's process, process.
Task manager. You may ask a follow-up.
Well, because Selectman Valancourt asked about what the processes that you follow, and I appreciate that you'd take our input, but four of the five of us have never been through this before. And so, how would you, what would that successful, what would a successful community engagement approach look like?
Well, I mean, I would start with, there are plans on, in community engagement documents, I'm sure, are available through the town of North Andover's process. We recently had a discussion with the town of Concord, for instance, which had updated a vision statement for, you know, kind of Concord 2030, and a very, very lengthy, two-year process of engagement. So rather than start, you know, from ground zero, we were able to take that document and propose a process that took its lead from the very types of vision statements people made in Concord around what they wanted from the town, and that in turn posed question, you know, created the potential to pose questions to the community around, around, can we tease that out a little bit? What role does the town manager play in terms of driving the community towards those kind of visions and those kind of, in this case, connections between the town and businesses and the town and cultural institutions? Now, we didn't ultimately get that contract, but there was an opportunity there to draw on existing community, or recent community engagement that the town itself had drawn in. And then you frame a, you frame a community engagement session that has some structure to it by pulling those kind of key documents from the town itself to prompt the discussion about what the community would look for. If, in fact, this is the vision, or this is what the community said in these documents they would like to see, what's the role for the manager and others to play in that? And how does the town government look like?
How are they getting that information to you in those scenarios?
You know, we've done it a few different ways. You know, school systems are a little different. When you have faculty in, that's their community, you have parents come in. What we typically do is, we love the big sticky paper in a forum, we send out with a notice about the meeting, that the three things, if you give them too many things to chat about, you lose the focus. So we say, three examples are, what are the challenges facing the town at this time? What are the challenges facing the town manager who gets this job? And what are the characteristics that you're looking for in the next town manager? And those three really get some conversations going. Sometimes, we'll post a job description with that, so you could post the job description, a charter, or, but you want to keep it simple with the community meetings, because you have so many voices that you want to, what is it that you want to know from the community when we ask those questions? You know, what does the town do well? We've done that. What does the town do well? What needs improvement? We never ask what they don't do well. That's just asking for trouble. So we say, "What needs to be improved?" Those are the, and it sounds simplistic, but it really gets people focused on those priorities, which you can then translate into the profile of one of the challenges. You'll see those are headings within the profile. So that's how we've done it in a number of ways. But if you had a strategic plan you wanted us to focus on, sadly, some of those don't have, aren't a living document. So it, you know, it all depends, but that's what I would suggest here. Keep it simple, and invite people in and say, "This is what we're going to ask you."
And I think the key is to create some structure that makes it productive, because it's not a lengthy, year-long, this is a fairly compact process, so you want to make the most out of whatever engagement forum or exercise you employ. You want some structure so that you kind of get to the key, you know, key results in a meaningful way, within a short period of time.
That was your follow-up to...
Yeah, I feel like I'll just...
Okay.
I'll ask it.
I did not see a timeline in your proposal. So could you tell us what your timeline is, and/or if you felt that the timeline that we presented in the RFQ was reasonable and achievable?
Yes. It was very reasonable. Let me see. All right.
You can conclude that it should have been there.
Yeah, that's fine. Four months is typical. You know, three to four months, depending, the wait time in that is the scheduling. So it depends on the size of your, God bless, it depends on the size of your screening committee, the availability of them to meet. We can make any meetings possible. It's really about, does it have to be evenings? Can it be Saturdays? Can it be a Friday? So what we like to do, as soon as we get brought on, we meet with that screening committee to really map out the schedule and start to hold some dates. The meetings they will have will be, while the position is being advertised, we will need to work on questions to get that going. You don't need to see the candidates to come up with the questions. We use the profile. In fact, we recommend you don't see the candidates to come up with the questions, because you have biases. You're going to say, "Oh, that person's, you know, a guru at ABC Agency, and I'm going to ask a question, because I'm thinking of that guru." So we say, create the questions, we provide standards on, we work with the committee to come up with questions they want. Then they need one meeting to review the resumes. We get the resume packets to them ahead of time. We come in on that, on that sheet that I showed you, we say, "Come in with your ratings of yes, no, maybe," so that we, because if there's seven people on a committee, and all seven say yes, there's no need to discuss that person, that person will get an interview. If seven people say no, we don't need to discuss that person, that person will not get an interview. So we're very efficient that way, and it does sometimes go on, because there's more maybes than anything. Then they need, from there, to schedule a few dates of interviews, depending on how many candidates. We recommend that they're close together. We don't recommend a Monday night, a Monday night, and a Monday night. You want to have that relativity. And there's different theories of, do you discuss each candidate after each one, or do you wait till the end, so that you're not... The human tendency is to start ranking your favorites as you go through them. And we, we try to say, try to wait. Everybody is a litmus test to the next person. So four months is realistic.
Okay. Talk to me a little bit about successful placement. What's your history of successful placement, and how do you ensure, what are the ways that we have assurance, guaranteed, whatever you want to call it, about the services that you provide?
Sure, that's easy. Successful placements, all of, all of them are, have been successful. We've had nobody leave in all of the 70 within their first contract. Some have left afterwards. We have, we had a town administrator, after his fourth year, become Secretary of the Agriculture in Princeton, so we wished him well. Sometimes, politics comes in, as you may know, not in this town, certainly. But we have a very good track record, and we have had nobody leave within their, their first contract. Sometimes, they haven't fulfilled two contracts, but, you know, these days, you just never know, things happen, the boards change, things change. Nobody has been fired, or not, the people have been not renewed, you know, but those are circumstances. But we have full faith in our ability to place people. We've been brought back to towns after a while to fill it the next time, so we have a very good reputation, and we don't hesitate in terms of that. We, we like to say, although we've never had to do it, if somebody leaves in the first year, we'll do the search again, and we can say that for you. We've never had that happen. Don't jinx me.
The other thing I'll just throw in is that, under no circumstance do we do a placement and then are talking to that people, to that person, you know, in the first three years. I mean, if they apply, they apply, we can't control that. But we're not in the business of making a placement in North Andover, and then talking to that person the next year about some opportunity somewhere else. That, that's completely inconsistent with our overall mission to improve the efficiency of government in Massachusetts, that we're looking to create as many success stories that, that results in as much improvement in how communities are managed in Massachusetts. So another guarantee is that we're not in the business of revolving doors, that we're in the business of, a business of, a successful placement that's there for the long haul. Thank you.
So, screening committees. So how do you assist the screening committees to ensure that they all work well together? You know, you put a group of people, any type of committee, there'll, sometimes there'll be some that are, you know, very exuberant, like to take charge, and then you have others who are quiet. So how do you ensure that they, they work well together? And do you attend all their meetings and all the interviews? One of you, or whomever. Do you attend everything? Or do you leave them to interview on their own?
Yes, yes, and yes, absolutely.
That's kind of the fundamental message of local government management, is getting people to work together.
Right.
So I think a tight agenda, I think some tight understandings of roles, and really gently enforcing some expectations as to what the, what the roles of individuals are. You mentioned not doing a Google search. That's pretty tempting for any individual to do, but it's really not, not a recommended practice for a whole variety of reasons that will... So it's really enforcing that understanding among the individual members. And I know Mary brings her HR experience across many, many years to...
And what we will bring up...
To emphasize that kind of...
Yeah, exactly. When, when you call us to engage us, we will bring up the issue of, we recommend that boards give the committee members a charge. And, you know, part of that charge is to, you know, work together to come up with a solution. One of the, Bob has done so many, you know, planning meetings, strategic planning meetings and with the public, sometimes there's a squeaky wheel in the audience, sometimes you have somebody so passionate on a committee, or they're, you know, we have to work with them to, you know, take turns. That's when we use our, I do an awful lot of training for the center, I actually think some of your employees have come to it. And what we do is, we then restructure the meeting to say, "Let's go around the room," you know, and say, "Give everybody, give everybody a chance." What we, what we try to do with the yes, no, maybe, and we do it up on the board, so that it's not a, somebody driving the bus, you know, so we're, we're used to doing that. Now, we don't know if one of you will be on the screening committee, and whether you have decided that or not. Obviously, two of you could be. We could, we can argue both ways on that. It all depends on the strength of the personality. We have seen that in some ways, it's excellent to have a member of the board on the committee, so that there is buy-in. In other cases, people defer to that person. So, you know, and it's almost like you're wearing the hat of, "Can I see the person in the seat?" Versus, "Who do we want the rest of the group to interview?" So a lot of those things are your, your decisions, but the, working with the group, we have extensive skill in that.
Okay, thank you.
So you weren't here earlier, but we, you know, we have a town manager who's leaving, obviously, and he's set the bar pretty high for us here. He's an incredible manager. So what would be, you know, your thoughts, maybe two, three top characteristics that you would see in a town manager? What would be, you know, the things that you would look for? Maybe, you know, given us that guidance, what would, what would be the things that you'd look for?
Sure.
In today's, in today's world?
What are your favorites?
Well, you know, I would say, you know, energy. I would say, energy and engagement, in terms of the ability to meet and kind of motivate and generate a discussion in the community around goals and visions and aspirations for the community. Second to that, the ability to take those aspirations and goals that you get from the community and communicate them to a management team that really needs to work across departmental boundaries, often, to get those kind of goals accomplished. And then probably has the technical skills to, or at least the strategic skills, to kind of guide some financial decisions and some human resource decisions around the gaps that'll be missing. So someone who can engage the community, and the board, and the other elected officials around a common vision or common set of goals, the ability to translate that, getting people to work across departmental boundaries to achieve some of those more difficult visions, and then have the technical skills and the strategic skills to really put the finances together and fill gaps in the staffing, to really make sure those kind of things get done. Kind of clear away the underbrush.
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah, I mean...
Those would be my top three.
And two things to add. I was fortunate to work with Mr. Mailer when we did the Essex Retirement Board search, so he was the chair of that committee when I worked with him on that. We often ask, "Are we looking for a leader or a manager?" And for this job, you need both. So I think that, you know, I think that's very key, because you've got to lead, but you've also, and when we say manage, we don't mean micromanage. There's not one department head here who wants to be micromanaged. So we, we look for those, those traits. Most people you interview will have the technical skills. They can do a budget. They can do, you know, but will they become part of your culture? Will they embrace what, what this town is? And every single town and city is different. So finding that, that person, that right person, who will want to be a leader in this, in this role. So that's what I would say.
Okay, thank you.
So we've heard that there's a lot of turnover right now amongst managers and administrators in the state. What would you attribute that turnover to professionally?
So...
Go ahead, say it.
My take on this is, there's a generational turnover. I mean, I got into this business in 1978. You can draw your own conclusions based on the math, but I think there is a, a generational kind of turnover of folks that got into this business as, as local government was being professionalized in the 70s and 80s, that are kind of end of career, or kind of looking to do something different. And I think that creates enormous opportunity for a whole other group of younger, you know, folks who actually got into this probably with a lot more educational or professional training than I had, you know, when I got into it, when I was 25. So, so I think that there's a lot of turnover, just because the demographics are creating that. And there's undoubtedly a pool of upward mobile professionals that are looking to, to advance to just this kind of opportunity. And I think our task is to help you find the best of that crop. And to Mary's point about how important is Massachusetts experience, that there's a wealth of experience elsewhere in the United States, because they've been at this professional management game a lot more, a lot longer than, than New England frankly has.
So you'd, you would say that there is, it's sort of...
That there's a wealth of talent nationwide.
Right.
That would look to this sector, this, this region of Massachusetts as a great step forward. So I think we have two pools to work with. One is, you know, young talent that's working its way up, looking for an opportunity like this to advance their career, and then otherwise, you know, folks from outside Massachusetts that would look at this as a very, very strong career move.
I would just, I'm sorry, I would just say, it's two things. The reason why we don't have the pool is because probably 15, 20 years ago, when cities and towns had to cut their budgets, they cut out their assistants. And if you're sitting in a room here with professional assistants, and that has been tremendous because we don't have a bench. We don't have a bench in a lot of municipalities and it's difficult. And I do think that particularly since this form of government is what people want to strive towards, you will have no trouble attracting good people. There is no doubt.
So my question is a little bit of a follow-on, I guess, from this one related to, in your proposal, the section where you talk about networking and recruitment of candidates. You list various outreach and extensive personal contacts as who you will, you know, network with to recruit. Some of the other proposals, we have before us discussed specific databases of prospective candidates, and I'm just wondering if you have a database of prospective candidates?
Yes.
Okay.
And 70 recruitments. We have every single person that has ever applied. We certainly follow up. We know where those people have landed if we have not placed them. We find the best person for the job sometimes isn't looking. We would like to, I would like to use Bob Halpin as the perfect example. When we recruited him to apply for Framingham, he had to be asked. And I think those are, you know, they're the ones who end up being more interested when somebody is pursuing them. And that doesn't mean somebody who sees an ad isn't as interested. But I think that we do a good job of reaching out and knowing people who might be the right fit once we hear from you, you know, is this a heavily financed job? Well, we might go with somebody who's been a CFO. We've seen more and more planning directors and CFOs try to make the transition. We've seen selectmen trying to make this transition. So it really does depend on how you define it.
So as a follow-on to that, you mentioned that often the best candidates are people who are not looking, which means they might be very sensitive. Obviously, they might not want their current employer knowing that they're talking to us. Your proposal states that the initial screening interviews will be in accordance with open meeting laws. So does that mean that you're recommending that the screening interviews are done in public session?
No, in accordance with the open meeting law, we can go into executive session for the preliminary interviews.
It should read the exemption to the open meeting law.
I was going to say, that would be...
Nobody will be applying.
You know, to your point though, I think it's key that someone that's kind of doing well in their current position, has no compelling reason to leave, to be coaxed into taking a step to advance their career, that you need that confidentiality to at least get to, to at least get to the finalist level, at which point we all know that it needs to be a public process.
Okay.
I think we've all served together here. Questions kind of all followed in line. But I think that's good because one of the things that strikes, that certainly strikes me is that there are trends, right? There are trends in every industry. I kind of compare it to sort of, you know, offensive coordinators, you know, all of a sudden something's the zeitgeist, this is the way we do it. Can you talk to those? Are there some trends that we should be tuned into that are going to help us make a good decision for today but also tomorrow? I think you may have touched a little bit on this, but take us through your perspective on that.
Trends in...
Who the candidates are, sort of what the skills are today?
Sure. Certainly, the trend is public administration degrees and not as much experience. Typically, highly educated, they have the degrees, they have the data, they have the analytics, they have the research abilities, the, you know, more technology, I'm a dinosaur. So we see that when you look around and see who's been placed and maybe that first job. I think the trend is to say, and I think it's, there's certain factors to it. In a place where there is strong department heads, towns are taking a chance on somebody who may not have the municipal, the depth of municipal experience. In a place that is maybe smaller and that person wears more hats, they're going for more of a seasoned person. So that's what I think the trend is. You know, I live in Shrewsbury, they hired an excellent manager, there's good department heads around him. In a smaller town where there's not that support, they have brought in somebody from another town, another town who was a sitting town administrator. You will get people who were town administrators in smaller towns applying for this job. So you will be well-served by that. And we have not assessed the salary on it yet, that will be a factor. Certainly, salary is a factor in these jobs because, you know, it's the buyer's market. So I think those are some of the trends and I think that you will be well situated and will get people from both of those groups.
Thank you. Somebody I'll add to that, and this kind of begins to get into the discussion of leader versus manager type of menus, that you'll find that with so much empowerment around information out in the community, that increasingly you'll find the need for a manager that's as adept as supporting the board in its kind of political policymaking role as he or she is in motivating the staff to execute. So there used, I'd say 20 years ago even, much more delineation between the board was elected, sets policy, I'm the manager and I implement, that just the nature of the community discussion that's going on and the power of information that everyone is, that there's much, much more interface between the manager supporting the board and making its policy decisions and then also having the respect of his staff, his or her staff to actually implement them. So I think that's probably a more, you know, kind of leadership evaluation decision, but I think that's more and more a trend you begin to see around what managers today bring that they might not have brought 20 or 30 years ago.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
You had talked a little bit about background checks prior to them moving to the next process. My question is about background checks. So I'm just curious, how many of those are you intending, like what do you, the next process is 10 people?
Twenty-five. No. Typically, it depends on how many, if this board says to the screening committee, we want three to five finalists. Sometimes that's three, sometimes that's four, sometimes that's five. We would make a decision at that point to do a background check on those candidates. We get a release for those people and we, the background we do, we put in there is a sub-vendor who checks their, verifies their education, runs a query check, does a credit check. We do all the personal references. We get a release absolving you and us from any references. We don't call the references they list, we call the ones they don't list. And, you know, we've never called a reference that, well, I've called one that was bad that somebody had listed, but, you know. So that's our approach with it. And you don't want to get to a final interview and then check a reference on somebody because it might be, you know, we may find something in all the year, I've been nine years, we've had references be the reason people didn't move forward, probably around seven times in all those.
So now to the question that I asked the previous candidate. Again, it's sort of a checks and balances to the process. Would you be opposed if we hired our own company to run the background checks?
No.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Back to you, Jake.
So just, I've looked at all the communities that you've worked with or touched in one way or another, and the different ways that the Collins Center has worked with them. I assume, and if you can clarify, you're involved in current searches right now?
Yes.
And so how do you, how do you juggle that? Where we're competing for the limited pool of talent out there against other communities? And you didn't, you didn't list the communities you're currently working with, so I don't know, perhaps they're comparable, perhaps they're not.
Oh, sure.
And so I just would under, I want to understand that process as you're assessing resumes and working with different search committees?
Sure, sure. Right now, the only town administrative search we're doing is Dover, and no one would confuse Dover with this town.
And Dover.
We're finishing up City of Lynn Personnel Director, we just did their Finance Director, Brockton HR Director, Finance Director. So now in terms of town administrators, Dover is the only one going on now.
The town would like the consultant to assist in contract negotiations. Your proposal states that the Collins Center is not providing that service? I just want to make sure I'm correct in understanding the response.
We recommend against it. It's your employee. Now, that doesn't mean if there's, there's support that's needed or what are they looking for, but to not, you know, that's a legal contract between you and them. So we can certainly, we have samples galore we could give you. We could, you know, say what we see in contracts, but sitting down and offering something, that's not what, that's not what we do.
But there is a support.
But you will support it.
There is a support role, informational role there.
Chris?
I'm good.
Okay. So my question is this, that sometimes through over enthusiasm for somebody to get a job or, oh, I know somebody, this kind of thing, there can be a disruption to the process. Somebody, as I mentioned prior to, you know, sort of a whisper in the ear when you're moving on. How do you handle that situation? Or how do you make sure that we have a fair, open process where everyone is treated correctly? Like, you don't want a candidate all of a sudden arriving at the last minute or that kind of a thing. So what, how do you make sure that that doesn't happen? And if it does happen, how would you address it?
By hiring a firm, you're already taking a step towards that, you know? And we ask that if anybody in town is contacted, you know, they get directed to us. We speak a lot with the screening committee about, you can't even talk about how many numbers we have, you know? It would, I'd be lying to say that sometimes things happen because candidates tell people they have applied, you know? So we can't protect against that.
Themselves, yeah.
Right. And somehow, and usually candidates tell a politician someplace that they have applied. So that can, you know...
That's what prompted me the question because it does happen.
It does happen and all we can say is no comment. We're in the process. We can't control what candidates say. Fortunately, in our experience, those are few and far between. And if you're doing a solid process and a fair process and you've got your screening committee members on board, I think that's the best you can do. You know, and we, we've had some clients have screening committee members sign something. We trust people when they get assigned to a committee that, you know, they're going to be confidential. But usually, it's on the candidate side where things come out and you're getting calls to screening committee members. So we advise screening committee members to say, I can't even acknowledge that person has applied or not, you know? So all we can do is recommend that.
Okay, that's an honest answer.
I think it's, in fact, it's kind of a tangent off the question you had about the screening committee is, you know, the message, the expectation that that's not going to happen has to be clearly articulated. And I will say, speaking from the perspective of someone that's been on the application side of things, you know, if people get wind that, that is likely, it really bears directly on the quality of the candidate you're going to get, subjecting themselves to that kind of public scrutiny, particularly with respect to their present employer. So I really think that early on, that the message has to be sent, that that's just not going to be part of the process.
Right, because you're right.
That it's a screening committee in a process in a firm, in a board that's perfectly able to make a decision based on the five or seven or whatever the right number of candidates is. But I think the expectation has to be created at the start, that that's just not going to be part of the process.
You're right, because if a candidate catches wind that this stuff is going on, they will withdraw.
Yeah, exactly.
Or not apply, and we could lose our very best candidate or candidate. So, yeah, that's why I've asked this somewhat pointed question. Thank you.
Anything else? I have a final question. I believe, we would like the consultant to directly receive the applications, and I don't think it was clear for me in the response whether or not that's a role you anticipate playing?
Yes.
Okay.
We have a recruitment email.
Anything else? Okay. I think that's good. Thank you very much.
Well, great. Well, good luck in the process.
Thank you so much.
Andrew, good luck to you. Congratulations.
Nice to see you again, Bob. Bob and I worked together back in the old days.
Thank you very much. Good luck. Good luck to you. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your question.
Nice to meet you.
Great to see you. Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is our timeline...
My budget presentation, this is the budget.
Yeah. Is our timeline with this such that we have to go over it tonight?
What's that?
The budget. Or could we do it in a...
I normally only give you, normally fifteen, but I'm going to give a special that it'll be seven minutes or less.
Okay.
Because only...
I know, true.
Because normally what happens then is you just want to make sure, you give yourself the 30 days for future company, but you forward it to the finance committee so they can start.
All right. Do we have to vote on it to...
Normally, you vote it and say you give yourself the 30 days, but you forward it to the finance committee. The school committee's already voted their piece, that piece is done. But I will shrink.
Okay, sorry.
In recognition of the time.
We wanted to make your last meeting, you know, a doozy.
Extra special.
Extra special.
Top of my head.
That's right.
What'd you say?
What did I say? You know if I can't.
Okay.
It'll guarantee seven minutes or less if I don't have them in front of me.
I guess you gentlemen are from Municipal Resources. Thank you very much if you want to join us here. We will appreciate a brief overview of your pitch, if you can keep it to 10 minutes. And then we will cycle through some questions for you and that's how we'll proceed. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Maybe we'll just take five.
Great. Given the time.
My name is Alan Gould, I'm president of Municipal Resources. I've been with the firm for 10 years. The firm has been in business for about 30 years now, I think actually 28. We do more executive-level recruitments in New England than any other firm in the nation for municipalities. And you may say, why is that important? And that's because as the pools get smaller, the reach needs to be extended. We read with interest an article about Steve Batha in Danvers. I don't know if it made you up papers or not, he just got a new deal with Danvers. He was someone when we did that recruitment, replacing Wayne Markey about five years ago that we took out of Connecticut, and we met him in Connecticut as a result of work we were doing there. In the last five months, we've completed, six months, we've completed manager recruitments in Dartmouth, Hanover, Acton, Lexington, Bedford, and we're currently in Concord. And with me tonight is Buzz Stepchinsky. You may know him as the longtime manager in Andover. Bob Maris here, longtime in Burlington. And I happen to have been born and raised next door in Andover. So I think we know the neighborhood.
And don't forget about our two people who could not be here tonight.
So Carol Grantfield, who's on the team, she has some time down in Florida right now. And Elizabeth Mensinger, our recruitment coordinator, has some difficulty making night meetings just with childcare. So you get us.
Thank you.
And with that, I think we're happy to take your questions.
Okay.
Was that about five?
I think you did it in under one. Yeah. I'll start with Sluggins, by keeping the same process, I guess.
All right, well, I'll ask the same question I've asked everyone. So I do see that you've got listed in here listening forums from the community. Can I...
get out to one of those forums, they can simply email this, the address for this one would be northandover tmrecruitment@m r a g o v dot com, and people can send us any of their input online. All those comments get grouped, and we can do employee forums as well, some one-on-one interviews. And anything that we get through those forums, or through the email address, we're able to group in similar topics, generalize it, so that nobody can be identified, and then provide it to you folks and a search committee, or whoever else is going to be involved with the process. Anything to add to that?
No, I just to echo Alan, we, I just did the Concord employee group, the department managers who came in and just kind of expressed themselves. It wasn't public, it was just me with them, as in terms of what they were looking for in their next manager. They had a manager, Chris Whalen, if you're familiar, he's been there 27 years, so longtime manager, similar, we had some angst, I should say, with some of the department managers, just thinking, what's going to happen? And we've seen that trend with the town before this one, which was Bedford, which had a 30-year incumbent manager leaving. So it was good input we got, and Buzz, I know, did the Lexington, similar component of those type of forums.
We did the public forums. Yeah. The public and the employee forums in Lexington, but in Concord, what we did was, just to compress things, we had a seven to nine o'clock session scheduled at the Town House on a Tuesday night, and then Wednesday morning, we did eight to nine thirty, or 10, at the recreation facility, and the next morning, and then that afternoon, right after lunch at the senior center, we had a one to three session. Actually, the biggest session was with the seniors, because we caught them right after lunch, and they were very happy to visit and talk to us. So typically, you know, we'll get 30 to 40 people showing up, you know, depending on the size of the room and whatnot, but people you'll find will want to come out and talk about the, what we ask them, we ask them, what's the profile of the next manager? What do you want him or her to look like? What are the characteristics that you want? So we'll get that sort of thing. And then we ask them, what are the challenges? You know, what are the opportunities for the next manager? What's going on in town that we need to know about? Because that leads into something that Alan will talk about in a minute. But we ask them, what are the challenges? You know, and if they can't, if they want to be confidential, I give my business card, they could email me, or as Alan said, they can email the company if they run out of time, or want to, you know, have some comments that they didn't want to say publicly. Because as you know, what comes to us is not a public record. What they send to us, to my Gmail, is not a public record. What they send to MRI is not a public record. So that plays a little different than gathering information in, for instance, a forum that you may have with the comprehensive report.
Conference of planning.
Comprehensive planning report.
Okay, thanks.
I appreciate that you gave us a list of communities that are comparable, that you've worked with in the past, and are currently working with, including Concord and Berlin. And so one of the questions I've had is, how do you, as a consulting firm, where you're guiding us, where we've not done this before, and you're searching amongst a limited pool of applicants, for a community like North Andover, how do you balance this limited pool of applicants against these other communities that you're also working to try to place, versus placing in our own?
Well, first of all, if it's another firm that's doing work in another community, we don't care, because we're working for our clients. If it's within, if it's within our own, within our own firm, very often, timing has a place in that. So, you know, Concord is running, I mean, if we started this one for you next week, Concord would be running about three weeks ahead of you folks. It's really, it's really hard to get around that. So, and not everybody, only one person is going to be number one in any given community. So that means there are other people, it might have been, might be a better fit for North Andover than they might have been for Lexington, or for Concord. And we find that there are new people that become available kind of all the time, and these gentlemen joined the team because they're really good at reaching out through that network. And then Elizabeth is really good at maintaining our database, and recognizing, for instance, in Hanover, when we did that, I said, geez, there was this, there was this young candidate that we had up in Vermont, and I can't remember his name, and I think he might be a really good fit for that. And within a couple of minutes, she had his name, and I had an email off to him. So a lot of it's going up, going out, and actively recruiting people that we think would be qualified. But the, you know, the question you ask is not easy, because it's a very limited pool now. And that's why we believe that the reach, particularly throughout New England, I mean, this would be a national search, we average candidates from 17 to 20 states. Of course, there's usually a bias towards New England folks, because they understand New England local government. But that's why I think that our reach throughout New England, we use that leverage for our clients. And at the same time, there are some candidates around the country who may have New England roots, and they want to come back. So they'll watch our website, and when they see something, they'll fire off a resume saying, gee, I'm interested in this community, or that community. So, you know, having been in the business for a while, folks know us, and they'll stay in touch.
We, we have, I'll just follow one more comment on the reach. In the Lexington, was it, I think it was Lexington, Lexington search, Buzz and I were talking to managers in Washington State and Hawaii, who had roots here.
Oh, I'll tell the Hawaii story. You tell the Washington State story.
But they had roots here, and that's the reason they were interested in coming back.
It is a long story.
But they ultimately, both of them chose to stay where they are. But the reason they were looking at New England, and coming back to Massachusetts, because they had roots here, and they wanted to, in one case, it was a mid-level manager, in another case, it was a manager who had about 10 years left, who wanted to end his career in Massachusetts. Both of them, as I said, chose to stay where they currently are. But that's the type of reach that Alan has been talking about, that we have.
Yeah, they, it was funny, I looked at the kid's resume, I say kid, it was probably in his mid-forties, and I said, why would somebody from Oahu be interested in New England? So he said, well, why would somebody from, so he called the young man in Washington, I called this fellow, and turns out, he says, well, he says, I was born in North Andover. You know, what? He says, yeah, I was born in North Andover, and I went to North Andover High School, and before I went to college, my parents decided to change careers, and they wanted to leave their jobs in the Boston area, and they moved to Hawaii. So I went to Hawaii, obviously, went to Hawaii with them, and went to college, and got married, and started his career. He was a county administrator on one of the islands, and he said, I'm interested in coming back. I said, all right, well, it's good to know. So, you know, once you put it in ICMA, International City Management Association Newsletter, and it goes viral, it's around the world.
Okay, I have a question about how you anticipate leveraging the screening committee, which we are planning to have a screening committee. Because when I read your response to that proposal, steps 10 and 11, specifically step 10, it seems like you don't necessarily leverage a screening committee so much, it's more you take responsibility of kind of getting the applications and doing the review, and you get down to three or five finalists. It reads like, without having involved a screening committee, and then they don't come in until after. So I just want to clarify specifically how you envision the role of the screening committee.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So, I'm sorry if we gave you that impression. Generally, when there is a screening committee used, I mean, we've done, I think it was Acton, where the whole process, we were just assisting the screening committee through the process, really, and then the board asked us to come in again at the end, because they needed help closing their end of the deal. But typically, and this would be, we're working very hands-on with the screening committee in Concord, we worked very hands-on with the screening committee in Lexington. So generally, we would have maybe 12 to 15 candidates, 10 to 15 candidates, that we would take to the screening committee. So we have vetted these folks at that point, through the essays, vetted the resumes, the essays, and then we've done the phone calls. So we're able to go to the screening committee with, well, I'll just say, reasonably viable candidates. And then we would have a meeting with the screening committee, provide all the materials well in advance, and then we go and we meet with that screening committee, and we tell them what we found about those candidates. It's the screening committee at that point that decides who they would like to interview, and we hope that they'll take some of our input. And then, you know, the interview, we'll facilitate the interviews that the screening committee has with the candidates that they have selected, and then we'll facilitate consensus after those interviews, for them to decide who they want to move to the board. That's how that works. I'm sorry if that wasn't clear.
Thank you. Yeah, I was guessing I probably...
Just to perhaps elaborate a little bit more, Bob and I are meeting with the screening committee in Concord next Tuesday afternoon, and we're going to present them with eight essay questions. Part of our special sauce is that we ask the 20, the 15, 15 to 20 sort of semi-finalists to write essays. And we have eight essay questions we're going to present to the screening committee on Tuesday, and we're going to say, okay, select four or five, and we will use those to find out what they know about the town, and what research they have done about the town. And that's all part of the challenge statement that we develop in advance of all of this. We use the challenge statement to get the essay questions, because we want them to do some research on North Andover, and to dig into it, and to come back with, you know, their real-life examples of how they've dealt with, you know, you name it, whatever your key issues are. We want to know how they have dealt with those sorts of things in the past.
So sorry, just to clarify, you will come up with the essay questions based on the profile and challenge statements that are done in the preparation phase?
And that's based on what we heard from all of those forums we talked about, the interviews with each of you folks individually, the emails that we received, that's what builds the ideal candidate profile and challenge statement. I'm pretty sure we provided a sample or two, maybe Lexington, or Concord in there for you folks to see. Yeah, Bob and I write those, we draft it up, and then we give it to the search committee for editing, to make sure that we've hit the high points in the community, and have addressed whatever concerns they have. And they'll, and it's an iterative process, back and forth, they've said, all right, you missed this, or you didn't include Emerson Hospital, they have a particular role in the community, or, you know, anyway. So, yeah, it's an iterative process to develop the profile and the challenge statement.
Can I just ask a short question? So, I'm a little confused about the essay. Do they perform, they answer their essay at home, or in front of you? So how are you, how are you confident that they're, that they're writing it themselves?
The phone interviews. So we have the essays in front of us when we do the phone interviews with them, and I mean, we, so we do processes for fire chiefs, and police chiefs, and finance directors. So, you know, all of us have been managers, and everybody that's on a police selection team has been a police chief. So we're able to ask questions that are, that are related to essay topics, that they just can't, if they had somebody else write those essays, they can't fake it with us on the phone interviews.
Yeah, one of the things that Buzz and I talked about this morning, speaking about going to Concord, and sharing some of the questions that we're developing, one of the questions that we both talked about that we're going to include, because of input we received from the Board of Selectmen, and some of the department managers, Concord just embarked, Mr. Valancourt, you just talked about it, Concord just embarked on a, what they call vision, envisioned 2030 for the community, and it's a massive document. They went through all of those type of public hearings that you went through, and anyway, they just accepted the document. But it's a pretty aggressive and intensive document. So for us to ask a question of a potential candidate about that envisioned 2030 Concord, they'd better have to have had it looked at, to answer the question. So we want to see if, the reason we're asking the question is, as Alan just suggested, when they answer the question, Buzz and I, or Buzz and Alan, or whoever's going to do the phone interviews, we're going to pick on the 2030 envisioned statement, and see if they actually looked at it. And we'll pick certain areas of it. So we want, to Buzz's point earlier, we want people to do their homework about the community that they're applying for, other than the people who simply send out mass resumes to any other community that would like to interview them. We want to be assured that the person who's applying for North Andover, or for Concord, is interested in that community.
Good point, Ken. Yes, you're right.
Oh, okay.
Did that answer your question?
I think so, I'm just trying to process it. So my question is, and I've got to be honest, with the lateness of the night, I hope I didn't already ask it.
I know, it's getting, it's getting there.
So the selection committee is really important, and, but there, some of them might be private citizens, maybe have never served on a selection committee. So sometimes different personalities come into play, you can have a very strong personality, and the one who kind of sits back, and how do you make sure that they work together, and that not one person just overpowers the committee? And also too, will you attend all of the meetings, and all of the interviews? Would you ever just let the selection committee interview on their own, or will you be there on their own meeting as a committee, not by themselves? Will you be, will you be attending all the meetings?
So if it's an organizational meeting that doesn't involve candidates, or any of that, we may not necessarily have to be there unless they need guidance. Luckily, I mean, we do some recruitments, you know, that are hours away. You folks are in the neighborhood. I live in Rye, and, you know, Buzz lives next door in Andover.
I live in Lowell.
And, yes.
I grew up in Lawrence.
So we're all right here, so to make those meetings is not a great effort for us. So that's, that's not going to be a problem, we'll be here as much as you need us. Now, as far as, you'll notice I used, when I was talking about screening committees, facilitate the meetings, facilitate the interviews. So we would be there for any interviews that would be going to be conducted, because, I mean, we do this professionally, so we need to make sure that nobody makes a mistake.
Or says something inappropriate, or gets us all into trouble.
Exactly. So, and that's why we're there. And if you were the screening committee, we were about to have interviews, I would already sent you an email that tells you basically, you know, what this is about, what to do. We send you about four pages of sample interview questions that you can alter, they might trigger an idea, or you can use them. And I always tell interview panels that if you ask a question that I think is inappropriate, I'll just intervene and direct the candidate to not answer the question, because even by choosing to answer or not, they're answering the question. So we don't even, you know, allow that, we do it in a way that isn't, you know, that isn't over the top. And, you know, I can't think of a selection committee we've had where there haven't been a personality or two that might be kind of strong.
Yes.
Sometimes it's a member of a previous governing body, or it's, it's somebody that's, you know, at every meeting, and, you know what I mean? So we're pretty used to that, and because we've all, you know, I spent most of my career in the police service, so I have a history of kind of dealing with people in those issues, and then became a manager, and these gentlemen have spent years and years facilitating different personalities, let's just say.
Any other thing that you should know, in our most recent experience with the Actons, the Lexington, and the Concords, their screening, and Bedford, particularly Bedford, their screening committees, like you, they're diverse, they represent the total community, but boy, and knock on wood, they have selected a good chair of those committees.
Yeah, that's important.
The chairs we've been dealing with are just, to your point, they know how to run meetings, and it's important that you get the right chair for those screening committees, because you're right, it's a diverse group, people have opinions, but somebody's got to manage that, and as Alan suggested, we're always there, but somebody internal to the committee has to manage that, so it'd be important for when you decide who your committee members are going to be, that you're going to have a strong chair.
And I think if you ask any of the, anybody on our client list, if you talk to the chair, or you talk to the chair of a screening committee, I think that they'd be very favorable to us, and I think that's part of the reason that we got all those jobs, the Lexington, Concord, Bedford, Acton, they're all kind of right there in the neighborhood, and that's because word traveled quickly about how we were able to get along with people.
Thank you. screening committees, like you, they're diverse, they represent the total community, but boy, and knock on wood, they have selected a good chair of those committees.
Yeah, that's important.
The chairs we've been dealing with are just, to your point, they know how to run meetings, and it's important that you get the right chair for those screening committees because, you're right, it's a diverse group, people have opinions, but somebody's got to manage that. And as Alan suggested, we're always there, but somebody internal to the committee has to manage that. So it'd be important for when you decide who your committee members are going to be that you're going to have a strong chair.
And I think if you ask any of the, anybody on our client list, if you talk to the chair, or you talk to the chair of a screening committee, I think that they'd be very favorable to us. And I think that's part of the reason that we got all those jobs, the Lexington, Concord, Bedford Act, and they're all kind of right there in the neighborhood. And that's because word traveled quickly about how we were able to get along with people.
Thank you.
It's been interesting, kind of, each of you, as professional groups, your perspective on the industry. And so, one of the things that I think would be helpful to us is to understand your perspective on what maybe the trends or the zeitgeist, you know, kind of the, what's the in thing that's driving the industry and sort of these candidates that would make a good fit for today as well as tomorrow? You know, sort of like, you know, what's the hot offense? What do you see?
Sure. I mean, the big problem right now is everybody that's these guys' age is retiring. And there's a gap of maybe 12 or 15 years where people just were not going into this field. So we've been really good at, so what you'll find for candidates, are those candidates that are looking to make that pinnacle move in their career and do their last eight, 10 years in a place like North Andover at the top of the field in a great community. Those are people that are seasoned, veterans. And then there's this next group, and, you know, Tom Brady was on the bench. He was the backup until Drew Bledsoe went out, right? So you've got this great pool of talent that is kind of new, maybe they've been in the industry five, six, seven years. And that's the woman that we just did in Bedford.
That's Sarah.
Sarah. She's a very nice young lady, probably been in the business not a heck of a lot of time, but she's just outstanding. So we've been really good at being able to reach that talent and draw them into these processes if we think that they're the right fit for that next step in their career. And I think that more and more communities just have to go in that direction because there aren't these senior-level people with all this experience. And, you know, when the Wayne Marquis left Danvers after 30 or 35 years, and Iris Singer left Middleton after like 30 years, people were telling us, oh, we want another Wayne Marquis, or we want another Iris Singer. And I tell them, remember, when you hired Wayne Marquis 35 years ago, he was not the Wayne Marquis that's leaving. And then, you know, then you have the newspaper stories like this, where I think the last line says that, let's see, I don't think anyone is any longer comparing him to Wayne. And he was in his early 30s, and he's the person that we brought out of Connecticut. So that's, so we're always looking for those people that are ready to make the next step for community-wise, and we're looking for those younger folks that are looking to make the next step professionally, professional-wise.
Great. The other thing that we try to talk to our clients about, and that is, keep your minds open. You know, the cookie cutter, I need a manager that's had 10 years' experience in XYZ community to come into North Andover and be the next manager. Keep your minds open to alternative type of candidates. We think it's important today, as Alan just suggested, there is that gap, but you can find people with skill sets that are transferable skill sets into the public municipal arena and highly skilled people. I think Portsmouth, Rhode Island.
Portsmouth, Rhode Island.
Former Navy retired captain.
Right. He's been there five years. He was assigned to NATO in Brussels. And he had applied. And so he's been there successfully now for five years. Tony Shiavi was in Ashland. He was the Colonel of Otis Air Force Base in Mashpee. And I just did a small community in New Hampshire, and the number-one candidate there, been on the job about five or six months now, he was a VP for Merck Pharmaceuticals. So it's a matter of some of their experience is transferable.
Yeah.
Because not everybody is within the vacuum of public government. And sometimes there's a lot of success by looking at what we call non-traditional candidates. And I think that we're probably better than anybody else at finding the non-traditional candidates.
And we interviewed a woman who was working for UMass Amherst. She was an administrator for UMass Amherst, and you'd kind of think that how would somebody who was an administrator in a university be interested in working for municipality? Well, turns out, she had huge budget to deal with, she had unions to deal with, she had boards to deal with. So the kind of profile that we set out for this particular municipality, she was able to check off a lot of those boxes because of the background and experience she had. We wouldn't have thought of recruiting somebody out of UMass Boston or UMass Amherst, but, you know, it's all about the fit. And once we get the profile down, then it's about finding somebody who gets the fit. But, Mr. Noble, let me just say, what happened was, 2001, 2002, we had a huge recession. So municipalities that had assistant managers, deputy managers, interns, they let them go rather than police officers or firefighters or DPW employees. Then we had the crash of '07, '08, and the people we hired back, same drill. We let this infrastructure go to save our, kind of, our core services. And that's really what's hampered us, all of us in the recruitment business, is that infrastructure that had been there all along, the assistants, the assistance twos, had all sought other careers because their jobs were eliminated in those economic downturns.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
So just kind of a follow-up on that, and you've got a lot of experience, a lot of years of experience in front of me here. What are your top characteristics, like two top characteristics you see in a town manager these days? I know what we heard earlier was, it's changed over the years. It used to be the engineering-type person, then it was the DPW-type person. So what do you think in today's world? What are the top characteristics? And maybe just one from each of you, or, you know?
Well, it sounds corny, but I think a good manager needs to have the skill and the ability to listen. I just think today, there's so much input that you receive, whether it's through social media, or you folks hearing what's going on in the community and relaying that. The manager has to have that ability to be able to listen and to decipher information because it's coming at you from all sides. And if you don't, and if you become insular and stay locked in your room, you're going to fail as a manager. The skill sets for a manager, and these guys will talk about that, I think, and I shouldn't say this because I was a manager for so long, they're readily available in finance and engineering, plus you have good staffs. Andover has a good staff supporting you. You don't need to be an expert in everything, but you need to be able to understand, listen, what your key people are telling you, whether or not it's a police chief or the public works director, or whatever it happens to be, and make decisions based on that. So listening, to me, is critical.
I don't think that's corny. I think that's a good answer.
And I would say, you know, a community like this is going to need a collaborator, somebody that can collaborate and form partnerships with the business community, with the school department, with the, as you know, from the gas crisis recently. You know, regionally, you've got to be able to build partnerships because the, that's the only way you're going to survive. And that's the only way the manager here can survive, is by, you know, having the kinds of people skills and the vision that you need to put groups together to solve problems, whether it be union issues, whether it be construction projects, whether it be putting, you know, breathing life into your comprehensive master plan. You need a collaborator to be able to do that.
Thanks.
We'll leave you with...
I mean, the integrity of trust, to me, just goes without saying. It's a non-starter if they don't have that. And I really just have to go along with the people's skills, I think, as well. And we have to recognize that the newer generation of folks that are coming into, whether it's the police departments, fire departments, or younger town hall staff, I know they're labeled as millennials, but they do take sometimes a different style to manage. We see a lot of that with police and fire departments. Some of the older managers are having some difficulty managing those folks because they have a different style and they have to be presented with opportunities in a different way. So I concur with these gentlemen.
Just one other question. One of the things that Buzz and I, and we again talked about it this morning, we've done it in a couple of our other communities, to me, one of the real growing issues for a municipal manager is the whole management of social media and what you're going to do with it. You can get overwhelmed by it, you can get involved in it, and some people unfortunately get involved in it the wrong way. But it is such a major component of anything in our lives today, but at the municipal level, I mean, you've all seen it. You've all seen the Facebooks and all that kind of stuff. People can, you can have a crowd in here tomorrow of 200 people and you wouldn't know why they were there. And it's an issue. It's an issue on how you manage it. A manager sitting in his office getting all of this input from various groups can get overwhelmed by it. So you need to have an understanding and an ability to manage it. And I don't know what the answer is, and it's evolving every day, as we all know. So you better be sophisticated enough to handle that.
Thank you.
Final question, so you've been around for a while. So I think the best way to frame this question is, what's the retention rate for your recruits as far as them fulfilling their first, the initial term of their contract versus how many that don't renew versus those that, prior to renewal, leave?
So I've been managing almost all of our recruitments for nine and a half, 10 years now. And I can't count on one hand the number of people, I mean, I can count on one hand, less than one hand, the number of people that are in the positions where we place them.
Okay. Well, fair.
And we'll probably do 30 recruitments this year. That's between police, fire, you know, DPW directors, town managers. So I think that that's a really good record.
I've been with Alan five years, Buzz has been three years. None of the recruitments I've been involved in, that person, that person who we were involved in the recruitment is still in that position.
Okay.
Follow him.
Good. Thank you.
Your proposal said that you would work with us to develop a timeline. In our proposal, we put a suggested timeline that we would like to, our request for a proposal, a suggested timeline that we hope to achieve, which was about 16 weeks. I just want to have your thoughts as to whether that's achievable or not.
Absolutely. Our timeline usually runs about 90 days from the time we place an ad to get the final, it's usually between 60 and 90 days to get the final candidates before the hiring body. And then it may take two weeks for us to complete the comprehensive background and help negotiate the terms of employment. And then it's a matter of how much notice they have to give their current employer. So that 120 days is just about spot on.
Just, if I may, in Lexington, we interviewed, we were hired, I think, a day or two after, it was like on a Wednesday, I think...
We were hired on the way home, actually. We got the call on the way home.
And the following Tuesday, Bob and I were there interviewing the Board of Selectmen, spent about an hour and a half with each member of the board, and then, you know, went right into the listening sessions with the employees and the public at large. So we were there the following week, and we can do that here.
Given all of your depth of expertise and experience with us, what's the question or questions that we haven't asked you that we should?
You've seen that list of questions, right? That I give out to the panels? Because that's one of our questions. I don't think, even ask us about price. You know, feel free to ask us about that. I can't really think of anything else.
No, but I think you did suggest that you're going to establish a screening committee?
Absolutely.
Okay, good. That's good for us to know.
And are you going to appoint the chair? I mean, we talked about this a few minutes ago.
I don't think, we haven't decided that yet. So that's the rest of our evening tonight.
My respectful recommendation that you do that, so there's not a lot of going around and around, or who's going to take the lead here. Someone should know who's in charge.
Craft the charge carefully.
And everybody's definition of careful is different. I mean, I've got a 16-year-old, so let's careful the end. Is that what I'm saying? So tell me what you mean when you say careful.
Well, you know, very often, if we get hired, we'll help the governing body craft the charge because we want to make sure that they feel involved and that they feel like they have a substantial part in the process. We also want to make sure, though, that if we're hired as professionals, that we don't lose the process to the process, if, you know what I mean? So we don't want to see the good deeds be kind of hijacked. And sometimes it gets to some of those strong personalities that could be on that group. So we just like to make sure that the charge is, it's not overranging because we don't want anybody to usurp your authority. We want to make sure that we're in a place where we can help prevent people from making a mistake.
Good. Good. Thank you.
Well, then I guess I'll move to my tough question that I don't, no, it's fine. So it's really important that this process be open and fair and that there's rules that are established. But in any process, there could always be someone who knows somebody that come, that they try to get their candidate in at the last minute, or there'll be a whisper or whatever. And my concern, of course, is it's open and fair, but also if word gets out that there's, then you'll see candidates withdraw. So how do you handle that?
So, in our proposal, I think it was pretty clear that we receive all the resumes and we keep that stuff very confidential. I cannot think of a single leak that's ever made it out of MRI. We get really tense about it when all those names, because we submit all the submittals to the screening committee, you know, for that final 12 to 15 people. And we make sure that we really implore them that this is confidential and that the people that would be applying for North Andover, because of the type of community this is, the type of salary you'll be offering, you're going to get some top-notch people that are happily employed in other very nice places, and we don't want to lose them. As far as political interference, I'll just be blunt. It's, that's me. We just don't, we don't participate in political interference. I had a selectman from a community once that we cut a candidate, or the candidate was not invited to the next phase of the interview, and I got a call from a selectman, and he ordered me to put the person into the process. And I said, well, Mr. Chairman, that's not going to happen. You hired us to do this job, to do it right, and that's what we owe the community, and that's what we owe the other candidates in the process. That was the end of the discussion. That person was not put in the process, not put back in the process. And he was part of the majority vote that voted for the, well, it was unanimous vote for the person that ended up as the number-one candidate. You know, personally, because I oversee all of our police recruitments directly, I take that very seriously. And, you know, as far as we're concerned, there's no politics. I can't be any more blunt than that.
I have one more question. The town envisions that we would have the consultant assist us in contract negotiations, not negotiate it for us, but assist us. And I didn't notice anything in your proposal about doing that task. Would you envision yourselves assisting in the contract negotiation?
Sure, it would be in there. It's probably the last bullet. So after the conditional offer is made, which allows us to do the background, we facilitate negotiation of the contract. I know that there's, you've had three of them in pages and pages of proposals. I understand totally. But that is definitely covered, and it's something we take care of.
Great. Okay, any other?
I have, just that, you hit upon it. So sometimes I think it's good to have a separation of powers and to have maybe, again, the checks and balances. Would you be opposed to if we hired our own company to do the background checks? Not someone that you would necessarily hire?
The only thing I would say to that is, we really pride ourselves on our background checks, and a lot of that is because we have such a police presence. So I have a whole team of folks that are, that have retired from the police profession, they work for us. So part of the reason we offer the guarantee that we do is because we do this comprehensive background. And to me, the most important step of the hiring process is the background.
I agree.
So I'd really be hesitant to give that up. You know, people talk about backgrounds, that we're going to do a credit check, we're going to do this, we're going to, you know, we're going to do a criminal history check, all that stuff. To me, that's, yes, it has to be done, but the real background check begins when you start doing what we call developed references. So these gentlemen don't do the background checks. I assign that to one of my investigators. So when I talk about developed references, is... So when I talk about developed references, is I don't really care who you listed on your personnel questionnaire. They'll have to fill out a questionnaire, it's about 12 pages long. It's the same one we use when we're hiring police officers. It's very invasive. So we don't really care about those references you list, because we're going to assume if you listed them, they're going to be good. So we're going to go to developed references. And we're going to talk to the chairman of the boards that they've worked in. We're going to talk to the police chief, to the fire chief, to the DPW director, to the town or city clerk. It's those kind of people that we're going to check with if they're not on the reference list, because we're going to get unbiased opinions. So if you wanted to have your own person do a background, I mean, I guess I'd want to see who was going to do it, what they were going to do. And I'd want to fill in any blanks. It's almost like I'd want to look at the background myself. Because every background that we do, I'm the last person to see it. I edit it, I send it back if I'm not happy with it. And then it comes back to me again. So I'm the last person to put eyes on that before it comes to you folks.
And.
How many pages?
Well, they're generally probably six, seven pages long. And then probably 15 pages of attachments.
What I was, just so there was no confusion, I wasn't saying that we would do it ourselves, meaning our own police department, we would hire somebody to do it.
Yeah, I mean, we would work with that. I just need to understand that. I mean, I hold our people to a very high level when we do these backgrounds. And I've rejected people, we've gone all the way through a process. And we may have found out some things in the background that we could not have possibly found out during all of our pre-screening. And when I get that report, I'll call whoever my contact is, on the chair of the council. And I'll say, "Listen, we have a problem here." And it's probably happened two times. And I've, I've recommended that we rescind the conditional offer. And we've done that. And going to the next candidate, or in one case, going back out again with the advertiser. Because it wasn't a suitable number two. So it's, it's a pretty sensitive issue with me. So if you did have someone do it, I would really like to be able to just take a look at it and make sure that I thought it was complete. And maybe you would allow us to do follow-up if they missed a couple of people, to do a little bit of a follow-up.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, I think we're good. Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you for staying late. And good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck to this guy. Congratulations on your last meeting.
We're making it count.
Yes, this is like a double meeting.
Really. It's like just before town meeting, meeting. We've got to get it.
The next item on our agenda is to, to vote on a search consultant. I mean, I put it on the agenda hopeful that we would feel comfortable making a selection tonight because of our aggressive timeline. I guess first I'll ask the group if we, if you all feel like you have, you know, the ability to make a decision tonight, or if you feel like you need to sit and think about it. We could always schedule a meeting, another meeting, not sooner than our next scheduled meeting, like a special meeting, if we felt like we needed to think about it. I guess I'll throw that out there first. Thoughts?
I mean, it's a good question, right? I mean, a lot of us got this material on Saturday. I mean, I did personally, I got it on Saturday. I was away last week, so I came on Saturday. So I've gone through it in as much detail as him, but I'm going to be honest, I haven't gone through all the appendices and everything else. So I guess if I had to make a decision tonight, I probably could, but I wouldn't mind a little additional time to, to review some of the additional materials that are in here. I went through the proposals, but I really didn't get a chance to go through all the material. I just didn't have the time. So it wouldn't, I wouldn't be opposed to more time, but if I had to, I could make a decision tonight.
Other thoughts?
I mean, I would respect. I, I think that, I feel the same way in the sense that I could make a decision tonight. I probably feel a little bit more comfortable than, than you feel. But I, at the end of the day, I want every one of us to have that type of comfort in this entire process. I would condition it with saying, can we commit to trying to get a meeting scheduled?
I definitely don't want to wait till our next scheduled meeting. I really feel like we need to.
You're right.
I mean, I'm, I would.
I respect that.
I would feel comfortable voting tonight, but I.
Forty-eight hour would put us at, at minimum Thursday. I mean, I don't know if we can have a brief Friday night meeting as opposed to Thursday night, but.
It's Thursday.
Yeah, so.
Oh, why not? Today's my birthday.
Yeah, I mean, I, I feel we've got really good insight tonight with each one of these. I think they, they, you could see the, the difference in approach, the personalities, the strategy. I think our questions were consistent all the way through in trying to fill the pieces that individually we didn't necessarily see in the proposal. So I feel comfortable in going ahead with the discussion. But to your point, Phil, I mean, I want everybody to feel okay with that. So I'm also okay with, hey, you know, if we need to do a meeting Friday night, if that makes everybody feel good, I'm okay with that too. So wishy-washy answer, but, you know.
If it would have to be an early Friday night.
I mean, I.
I mean, I said, I'm good with it.
Yeah, I feel, everybody feels like, no one, no one's like, we have to, we have to push it. So I, I guess I would prefer that we have a conversation, we try and make a selection tonight. Unless you feel that you really have to have. Okay, so let's.
If we're going to get that ball rolling. So I will say that I, there were a lot of things that were said by all three that were really reassuring about setting the stage of what, what the actual field of town management, municipal management looks like. So I appreciate that we're entering a certain stage where it's transitional, where we're looking at a generational change. I appreciate, I appreciate both perspectives that were offered about the background check. It was really interesting because nobody had replied back. I thought, I thought that the last gentleman's explanation, I'm blanking on his name, actually.
Alan.
Alan Gould, excuse me.
Straight in the end.
Yeah, so I thought that that was, that was an interesting take on it. I mean, I have to say that I don't know if it's just because of the order things happened. I think I was most impressed with Community Paradigm. If I had to rank them, so I'd be inclined, I think, to, to support them. I think I would feel comfortable with the way that they explained the support services they provide to our eventual search committee. But I don't want to put anybody on the spot with the motion. I'd be more interested to hear feedback from my colleagues.
For me? Oh, sorry.
No, I was just, so I guess my thought would be, I mean, I, I like the fact that Mr. Gould gave an answer that was challenging. It wasn't just, yeah, you can do that. He gave a very thoughtful answer to that last question. I thought, you know, and I thought the team here, the three of them have a great deal of experience there. The number of placements that they've done over the years is very impressive. But, and I mean, just to say, just to get it out there, all, all three were very impressive. And they've all done a tremendous job placing folks and have a really good track record. My, my preference would probably be municipal resources going forward.
I am, I actually did like the first two. And I'm pretty open to those. I know it was a tool that they feel pretty good about, but I really am not crazy about go home and write an essay. I just think, yeah. It might be because of my personality. I'm someone who likes to deal face-to-face, mainly because of the industry I'm working in. But I know they felt very strongly about that, but I just wasn't particularly comfortable with it. His answer was fine on the background check. I kind of asked that to, to see, again, I see it as checks and balances. They initiate a candidate, but then we would hire our own person to make sure that we're jiving with them. I mean, it's just human nature. They, they give us three great candidates and they might, you know, I don't want to. But, but I liked that he was very honest and, like you said, he pushed back. And that's, that's part of why I ask these questions, just to see how they react, so.
I just, I deal with municipal, I'm sorry.
But I, I think for me, I prefer the first two.
I feel that it would be a very tight process. And I feel with municipal resources, it would be a very tight process. And I feel it would be a very well-run process. That was one of my, one of the things that I was impressed with them, I felt, just from listening to them. And I feel the process would be very well-run and tight.
Well, yeah, I do, I do agree. I think the two of them stood out in terms of the detail and transparency of their process. That would be Paradigm and MRI. I felt that they stood out in terms of really letting us understand and being clear with what their methodology and approach is. And I think that's really important, because to me, part of this discussion tonight is they, to put it most bluntly, they have to sell us. Because how they sell us is really how they're going to sell themselves and sell our community. So we got to see really in play, at least that's the way I would interpret it, how they're going to reach out and how they're going to work. And I think between Paradigm and MRI, you really got a good, good sense of that. For me, I think Paradigm maybe has a bit of the edge, simply because of the level of detail they went into. When you really look at the samples, when you look at, you know, they really opened up their whole approach. And you really could see, this is, it was like you were sitting next to them in the process. And I think these others gave us clips of it. But this, you could really vision what it was like. And to me, I thought that was extraordinarily potent in making me feel comfortable that they're going to take in what our community wants in that process and integrate that in. And they spent a lot of time talking about that, right?
Yes, I just want to piggyback on that. For me, they were the candidate that most clearly read our request, exactly what we wanted in the response, and gave us that answer, explained what we wanted, listened to us the most in terms of what we were asking for, and put a very detailed response together with that information. Which makes me feel more comfortable that they would do that with what the, you know, public and department heads and everyone else, and we are saying we want in the town manager, versus maybe giving a proposal, but not necessarily tuning in exactly to what we said we wanted. So I really appreciate that. And then I felt like with the essay question, I can see that it could be beneficial, but it, I don't know that I, I guess I don't know that I'm sold on the value of it. And I, I felt like with MRI, the, they would run the process. And with the essay question, it solidified my, my feeling of it, that they will do maybe more of, more than the, than the screening committee would be doing. I like, I feel like the screening committee would be more empowered under the Paradigm team than under the MRI team. And that's just a sense I got from the response. I know, I know the answer in the interview question was that they would leverage the screening committee team. But I, I feel like, for whatever reason, and especially, I guess, how they responded to the proposal, that the Paradigm team will really leverage that committee the way I'm envisioning the committee being leveraged. So that's somehow how impartial to them.
I mean, some of us are more than one, but that's like four? Because you said Paradigm too, didn't you?
I did, I like that. Their job is to be the salesman for the community at the end of the day with managers. And so I really like that.
They were relatable.
I think that you hit the nail on the head, actually. And so it's funny, so not to put you on the spot, but I felt like two different groups possessed certain attributes, actually, that you embody. I thought MRI, I really liked actually the way. I'm not sold on agreeing with Mr. Gould's explanation for the background check, but the fact that, you know, he's interviewing with us, it's clearly something that matters to at least one selectman. And that he answered honestly with, and professionally. And I felt like that you, you actually, as a manager, that's one of your strengths, is that you'll, you'll push back without being difficult and help us see a bigger picture, even if we don't necessarily agree. That being said, I also, I mean, if I were to define what's the best thing that a town manager can do, it's doing their homework. Because that means you have to listen in order to do your homework. It means you're a good communicator, if you're actually able to project that you know what you're talking about. Otherwise, it's not apparent that you've necessarily done your homework. And that's where I feel like you, as, as a town manager, have been really strong. And it hits to the point that several of you said about Paradigm, is that the, the desire to dump, jump into this, if you look at their proposal, it shows that they did the research for our community. And I, again, we, we don't have, I think, the ability to necessarily handhold every step of the way. I don't think we want to handhold the consultant. And so if they can take the direction from us and run with it, and there not being any ambiguity, and they clearly take direction based on the initial information we present them, then that helps all of us. So I'd make a motion to appoint Community Paradigm Associates LLC as our consultant for the town manager search.
Is that second?
Second, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
You may honestly appoint them.
They were all, they were all, they were all great. At least we, we had good responses. Thank you, Dee.
Yeah, that's a really.
You did a, like I said before, you did a very nice job with that.
But your work should be good. Oh, by the way.
Okay, now we're moved to appoint the members of the town manager search committee. So I think obviously each of us has, will appoint one person. I guess I would suggest, if we're all ready, each person just name who they're planning to appoint, and then we'll have one motion read.
Oh, one motion.
One motion with all the names read. That way we can, because we're not voting on any individual person's appointment, we're voting on the committee being appointed. So maybe.
Okay, I am going to nominate Lou Napoli.
Lou Napoli.
Nice choice.
Do you need addresses for this?
Lou Napoli.
Say it loud enough, yeah.
Lou Napoli, okay.
I appoint Holly Vichki Lynch.
Now, you, you think he heard that, he didn't hear Lou Napoli either?
I, I would appoint Holly Vichki Lynch.
It's the Vichki that got confusing.
I will appoint Donovan O'Connell.
I will appoint Mark Rogers.
And I'm appointing one of our guests earlier this evening, Terry Holland. But I have to just share with you a little interesting story that it was another selectman that told me that Terry's father, the late Ray Holland, was actually our first town manager on an interim basis while they were searching for the. So I thought that was kind of, I didn't know that when I appointed him, but I, that's who I appointed, so.
So could one person just read the motion with all the names?
Madam Chair, a motion that we appoint Lou Napoli, Holly Vichki Lynch, Donovan O'Connell, Mark Rogers, and Terry Holland to the town manager search committee.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
It is, it's a great group. And they're diverse.
Yes.
I was thinking that.
Yes.
You should be appointed to something for waiting.
Very sorry, sir.
You're applying for something. He's under licensing.
What are you here for? Okay. Your wine lab, okay.
Madam Chair, a motion that we move into licensing.
All in favor? Aye.
Okay, we're, we're in licensing. So let's, let's move right to that. We have an application for change of license for the wine lab. So somebody speak to that for us?
So I'm Tim O'Connor, I'm one of the owners of the Wine Lab. Our general manager and director of operations unfortunately couldn't be here tonight because we're running a fundraiser at the Wine Lab for the Mass General Cancer Center. But the reason why we're looking to change our license over to a full liquor license is actually the great support we've received from the town. When we came into this, so you may or may not know, that a Massachusetts winery license requires us to obtain all, anything that we sell from within Massachusetts. That has proved to be quite an issue, because there are not very many wineries in Massachusetts who can produce what we need. So really, it is the support that we've received from the town that requires us to kind of move towards this. But one of the things that we really want to focus on is that we're going to remain true not only to our client base, but our concept. So we're going to stick with our wine libations and our small local vineyards that we'll be purchasing from. It's just going to give us the ability to obtain more and to keep. going to give us the ability to obtain more and to keep more in stock, so we won't have days where we're running really low or having to turn people away because we don't have the stock in. We will have no shots. There will only be top-shelf liquor, if any, and it will really be just to complement the existing wine that we serve. No change to our concept. We're still going to do our local art gallery that folks love, and we're still going to have weekly music. So, any questions?
From the board?
I think it's a great idea. I think you have a beautiful facility, a great build-out, and we really want to see you stay. So we want to, I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely. So.
Was that a motion?
I'll just hear a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the liquor license for the wine lab. I don't have the, hold on.
And I was seconded.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, passing unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. We also have a, from Merrimack College, a request for 17 one-day wine and malt licenses for the following events. I must say to all those that are still watching us with, you know, guess what, we're working on changing this, so this may be the, close to the final finale this, but this is for concessions at the athletic fields on February 19th, 2019, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. For concessions at the athletic fields on February 23rd, from 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. For concessions at the Rogers Center on March 2nd, from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Concessions at the Rogers Center on March 5th, from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. A reception at the Cassia Hall on March 20th, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. Concessions at the athletic fields on March 23rd, from 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. Concessions at the athletic fields on March 27th, from 3:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Reception at Cassia Hall on March 4th.
April.
April, April 4th, from 3:30 to 7:30 p.m. Concessions at Rogers Center from, on April 4th, from 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. Concessions at the Rogers Center on April 5th, from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Concessions at the Rogers Center on April 6th, from 2:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. Concessions at the Rogers Center on April 6th, from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Same day. Concessions at the athletic fields on April 6th, from 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. Concessions at the athletic field from April 13, on April 13th, from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Concessions at the Rogers Center on April 13th, from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Reception at the Rogers Center on April 23rd, from 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. And concessions at the Rogers Center on May 11th, from 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. And in our packet, we have all our sign-offs as necessary and required. Any questions or comments from our board here?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
You know, in your honor, because we're getting our dollars' worth tonight, Andrew. Getting our money's worth, pal. Okay, let's see. What do we have next? Okay, finally. Revision to our North Andover Alcohol Beverage License Regulations. And Tom Counseligan, thank you for being so patient. This is the payoff for all your good, hard work. You get to tell us at 10:15 at night.
I'm going to stand. So this amended regulation was before you earlier, and what this is proposed to do is actually deal with these one-day licenses that Merrimack College applies for. And they will be applying, provided this is passed, applying for some sort of global annual licenses. It would probably be three annual licenses. That would include the areas where they typically have come in and asked for one-day licenses. The regulations are actually sort of a local codification of the state law. So it doesn't create any new authorities through the board. It just codifies it in our own regulations, so that when the issue does come up, we can say, oh, here we are, we have it in our own regulations, we know the process for this. So if you have any questions for me?
So, Attorney, will there be a separate fee for each one of the licenses that they'll be applying for? Is that how it works? I thought you said there would be like three they would be applying for.
Right. So, as proposed, the license fee is $4,000 for a beer and wine, and $6,000 for the all alcohol. And so each license they would apply for would be a different license fee.
Okay, great.
And one of the things that I like about it is, part of that codification is more definition, and I think, Selectman Valencourt and Decoll, Jerry, you brought this up in the past, where is the, where is it being served? What's in the environs around it? What are the clear restrictions and responsibilities? And sort of having that laid out, as you say, kind of permanently in here, it puts the Merrimack on notice as maybe too firm award, but there's clarity as to what the responsibilities are, and I think that's very helpful.
Right. I think that's, the clarity is really important, because right now you have, so you have your 16, and they're all in one location, and they're all over the campus. But what this annual license will do is we'll provide a lot of clarity as to where actually are the license premises, how the alcohol will be stored, and the security me, you know, in the application process, there'll be a discussion about the security measures. And one of the things to keep in mind is, right now Merrimack College does have an annual license for some areas on the campus. And so what they'll do is they'll show where the existing annual license is, and then sort of superimpose the additional areas, and that will be included in the new annual licenses. And I have been in discussions with their general counsel, and so they're prepared to come in and apply for these as soon as these regulations are adopted.
And I think that's, that's also valuable, because then we would have the license in hand, but that would give us the opportunities as a board to actually have the conversation with them, and then make our decision about granting the license to them for those locations. And the other benefit that will come out of this is, if they decide in the future they want another location, now we've got a very clear process as to what we would need for that, and they know too. So, it just sort of ties it up nicely. So, I appreciate it. So our action tonight is really to take a look at this as a board, to weigh it, and then at our next meeting, Madam Chair, to ask that this be on the agenda to accept as an amendment?
I thought this, we've already looked at it, so.
So if you're, if you're ready.
Yes.
We can, we can do a motion, it's great. So I'll hear a motion to accept it then.
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve the amended language for special alcohol licenses as detailed in the agenda.
Do I have a second? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All set? Thank you.
Thank you.
Unanimous vote. And that takes us out of licensing. I'll just hear a motion.
Motion to move out of licensing, Mr. Chair.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
To you.
Okay, now we are back under item C, under the consent items. We have a donation of five pieces of gas detection equipment from Columbia Gas to the fire department that we need to accept.
Madam Chair, will we accept the five pieces of equipment?
I see.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item is to approve an emergency management agency application to volunteer and background investigation release agreement and volunteer participant release of liability and assumption of risk agreement. This has stemmed from a recommendation from our chief of police around, but I guess our, our town council can elaborate. I was going to give that review, but that's great, thank you.
So, this stems from, I do resent, Madam Chair, a memorandum from the chief of police who recommends having the emergency management volunteers go through a background check before they are appointed to the committee. And this is something that I'm familiar with in the communities that I have represented in the past, where the emergency management volunteers have gone through a background check and a release of liability for the town. So I prepared that application process, and that's from, taken from the best practices guide from the Massachusetts Emergency Management for Local Volunteers. And I just adopted it for North Andover. And so what this does is, because the volunteers are in this position of trust, and they're acting on behalf of the town, it provides that sort of comfort level for the police to have a background check of the volunteers.
I think sometimes these type of things are prompted because something bad happened. And in this case, it's just nothing, the thing, bad thing that happened was the Columbia Gas disaster, and we saw how much we actually relied on these people to service our community and residents. So I think this is an important proactive step to take.
Yeah, exactly. I was just going to reiterate this. This is a great example of looking at the disaster that happened and seeing if there's any ways we can improve the way we do our general business, based on what we learned on that. And I think this is a great example of, you know, these, these folks have, do a great deal of service for us, interact with the public, and have access to a lot of information about the town and how we, how we do things that warrants this.
Is it personally, people involved, and personally their homes, their belongings?
Yeah, exactly. So I think this makes great sense. Thank you for that. Do I hear a motion?
Madam Chair, move that the board of selectmen approve the emergency management agency application to volunteer and background investigation release agreement and volunteer participation release of liability, participant, excuse me, release of liability and assumption of risk agreement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is the acceptance of a grant from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Veterans Heritage Grant Program in the amount of $11,090 to be used for the Vietnam Veterans Memorial at the high school.
This is a great thing.
Yeah. I think our Veterans Services Director, Joseph LeBanc, applied for this grant.
She did, she did.
And the town will be providing the additional funds to complete the work, as the total cost of repairs to the memorial is $22,000. So this grant of $11,000 will go towards that, and then the town will provide the remaining funds.
And my understanding, too, is that it will be built so that we, you know, some of the, the reasons why we needed repair, there were a traffic accident, so to speak, and this should alleviate that. And it's been, been working on this a long time. Yeah. A long time. So this is, this is really good news, and.
Mr. Rand has participated in the sort of vision of what that location will look like as well.
Great.
It's a, it's a very important memorial, and.
Madam Chair, I move acceptance.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. Next item is to accept donations in the amount of $40,690 from the North Andover Youth Services Groups for the new fields. We had Youth and Services Director Rick Gorman speaking with us earlier tonight, and he elaborated a bit on this, so I guess we don't probably need to talk about it anymore, unless there's any questions on this item.
I move that the board of selectmen accept the donations from the North Andover Youth Sports Groups to be used towards towns' fields. Second that.
All in favor?
Can I ask just a follow-up question?
Oh, sorry.
No, no, it's because it wasn't going to change how I accept it, but just because in the follow-up, or in the supporting documents in our agenda, it shows the four different associations that provide funding for this account, that make up that $40,000-plus dollars. And so, just to clarify, is that all based on registration fees?
When I was, I used to be the chair of the Booster Club, and what we did is, we would, you know, we would spread that cost. We would attach an additional fee for each participant.
And is that consistent? So the Booster Club is one shot?
I don't know how this do it.
It's $10 per.
Yeah, it's a fields fee for when you register.
But for every, because there are four categories. That's the same case for Little League, lacrosse, boosters, and soccer?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, the next item is to approve the contract with the acting town manager, Lynn Savage. So, in our last meeting, as you might recall, you all granted the authority to me to discuss with Ms. Savage a compensation. I sent you a communication explaining how we arrived at the communication that's proposed in the contract attached to your packet. It basically equates to $15 an hour, you know, increase in pay for Ms. Savage. That was sort of also validated through an analysis I did of the time, I think, that, you know, additional time that she would spend on certain tasks and applying an hourly rate to that. And interestingly, it all arrived at the same number, so it seems it was validated two ways. I think I explained that in my, in my email. So, you will see that contract, which outlines a payment of $562 weekly, I believe. Sorry, I don't have it in front of me.
Yep.
If I remember the figure exactly. Thank you. Any discussion on that?
The other thing I noticed, I appreciate that you really also broke out kind of the scope of the task, so, and I think that was, that was impressive, sort of what is additionally on the plate. So, it's really, there's a lot more that you're carrying, so we appreciate.
Yeah, and folks should know that you're doing your regular day job as well as the town.
Yes.
Carrying on your duties as finance director.
Yes, and what makes it kind of, it needs to be noted, is that it's before-town meeting. So there's a lot of numbers that she needs to be responsible for as well.
Just speaking of numbers, though, just general point of information, or I guess a question. So, between this amount, assuming we approve a temporary consulting contract with the outgoing town manager, and the need to pay for a consultant, how does that jive with the town? I assume that's all being pulled out of the town manager line item that is currently set aside for pay. So how does all of that equal out compared to what your typical weekly salary would be?
We have a profit.
I know that that sounds.
More than enough.
Going out the door is still.
So, I mean.
Plainly you'll generate a net profit. Yeah, well, that makes sense.
It's not an unfair question to ask.
No, it isn't. It's a fair question.
I've seen communities go and spend money all the time and not have it, just spend.
In the, in the spreadsheet that I did, that had an analysis of the compensation that we would provide Lynn, I included an estimate of the cost of the consultant, which was very close to what they provided. And we also already had discussed what we would be compensating Andrew for the consulting services, because we had done that in the executive session. So, there will be sufficient funds. That's, I can see that spreadsheet if you're interested.
So it's really more, we get a scope of expertise for a very good value for a bunch of, for a group of services here, is really what it comes down to, which is configuring it all differently, so.
1,800, we can add to the first $4,000.
And, yeah, yeah.
I'll make a motion that the board of selectmen approve and sign the contract with acting town manager Lynn Savage.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Good.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Lynn, for taking on the additional responsibilities. The next item is to approve the contract with Andrew Mailer for consulting services. So, as you will recall, we had an executive session, I don't even know the date right now, let's see. We had an executive session on January 21st, during which we discussed the terms that you will see reflected in this contract. So Suzanne and Andrew and I converted the, those terms that we voted on into this contract. So I think the only item that is different, we had talked about paying for a cellphone usage, and we might, we changed that to just letting him keep the cellphone and not paying for it. It's a net benefit to us. It's a small, small item. I think financially, we're better off with this new.
Cleaner.
With new item, and it's cleaner. But, yeah, it's a, it's a small.
And that's until the termination of this service agreement?
We were going to pay a fee for the bill monthly until the termination of the agreement. Instead, we're just saying, keep the phone. We're not going to pay you anything for it. We're not going to get it back either, but the amount.
What about the service? We pay for the service?
No. So, there should be, I'm assuming, no other, nothing else different from what we discussed in that executive session. Are there any?
The only, the only comment that I have, just so that it explains to the public who might take a look at this contract, and I personally did struggle with this part a little bit, no, nothing against our town manager, to say the least, is the, the invitation for you to. for you to speak in Tennessee, which came before you were, you were leaving with the town manager of Andover. And I, I struggled with it because you're so, it's so long after you're leaving. However, after giving it more consideration, I feel as though that with what we, this, for those at home who don't know, maybe you want to speak to what you're going to be speaking about so people will understand why we're choosing to do this. Because people would read this and go, this doesn't make sense. I don't know if you want to talk about it or I'll...
I mean, it's fairly brief. I've been asked to share the North Andover experiences associated with the Columbia gas disaster with a group of several thousand municipal management types. That would be the...
So that they will learn from...
Yeah, I think we'll all hopefully learn from it.
They'll learn from our experience. And so after thinking about, you know, how the public might perceive this, that's why I wanted the explanation. And also taking sort of indirect personal experience, I have, my youngest son is an environmental scientist. He does a lot of environmental cleanup. He has done Haiti, as did my middle son, which had the earthquake. He has done the islands during the hurricanes, Puerto Rico and the American Virgin Islands. And then he was sent to California to do Paradise, California. And the phone call he gave back to me, and I'm just sharing this because I think it puts it all in perspective, is he said, you know, Mom, what happened to us and what happened to North Andover was really bad. He said, but it's nothing compared to Paradise, California. So we got help from all over, everywhere during our, our disaster time. And if this, him speaking at this event helps any other community, then I say it's worth it. So for that reason, as awkward as this is, and I think anybody who reads it can see that it's somewhat awkward, he's no longer with us, but we're, but I think it's the least we can do. So I just wanted to make that clear because it's not clear in the contract for anyone who reads the contract. The only other one thing though, so on the computer though, which was explained to me, all the information stays with the town.
Information you mean?
That you had on your...
Of course.
Yes.
Public record is public record, yes.
Yeah. So, so the very fact that phone in this, which isn't really worth a whole lot of money, I just don't want it to be a precedent that we, most of our equipment should stay with us. But I think the more important thing is the information stays with the town.
Yeah, of course.
And especially if there's ever a FOIA request or something that we have that.
Just 30 seconds worth of commentary. I provided in writing to the entire board this idea so that if there was, so if there was feedback, we could discuss that feedback. You'll see that in the minutes, in the meeting minutes get accepted by the board under executive session. Actually provided these so that the public at home to enlighten them. I provided this in writing to the board. We discussed the items in writing. And that was done so that there would be transparency, first an executive session and then an open session. So I don't leave anybody the impression this has been sort of this, I know that you're saying that, but I don't want to leave the impression that this has been this one-person discussion with someone. This was include, the entire board was included in the dialogue. We agreed to it. If there had been some difference of how we should approach this, then I would have sort of altered course and we would have figured that out. But the board, so the public knows, the five members of the board and myself and council had this conversation in the executive session and agreed to this framework some weeks ago in fairness. And the only thing that's happened is it's been translated from a single series of bullet points to something that protects you folks in terms of indemnity and risk and, and all those things. So to be clear, this is something that the framework has not altered from the first time we had a conversation.
Yeah. I think it's important that people from home and frankly, anybody who read the agenda understand that even though it says a consulting contract, this is a reflection of the unique circumstances that we faced with the Columbia gas. And so rather than change horses midway, I mean, we're fortunate that you're willing to stay. I think anybody who's been paying attention to what we've discussed over the past four months, they've heard us talk about how your colleagues speak of you and the role that you've played and how frankly, Andover and Lawrence have benefited from your leadership at the table. And they've been very public, those leaders, about the role that you've played. And so I think it's important for folks to realize that you're leading a little bit earlier and we released you from that contract, but you're willing to be, be a stable part of the relationships we've built when it comes to navigating this obstacle course that Columbia gas has created. I think it's also worth pointing out that even though you're going to work for the state, I want to point out Section D regarding your due diligence with making sure this was cleared through state ethics. Because I know that that was a question that I had specifically about how, how you juggle those two roles. So again, it's, it's fully enshrined within this contract. And so I know, I appreciate your willingness to go through that and to stick around because obviously that's something that's going to require more of your time outside of your normal operating hours as a, as a newfound state employee. So thank you for, thank you for your willingness to see this through.
Thank you for pointing that out. I think because I've been thinking about this for so long, I didn't think to state why we're even entering into this contract. And so thank you for providing that background because obviously that's critical for anybody watching at home who doesn't, hasn't been following this conversation.
Right. You've just read the contract, doesn't it?
But you hit the nail on the head. I think it's going to highly benefit us to have Andrew continue to, you know, be involved in the Columbia gas negotiation specifically so that we get everything that we're due in terms of that settlement.
So I move that the board of selectmen approve and sign the contract with Andrew Mailer for consulting services.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, the next item on our agenda is approval of minutes from our January 28th open session meeting.
May I adjourn? May I motion that we accept the minutes as presented?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Now, as we had said in our last meetings, I, we will regularly have an update on the recreation complex and the senior center. I know that you guys will give us extremely brief updates on those this time around.
Or we'll all be seniors and we'll be able to go, all of them.
Given this, given the time.
Okay. So I will go first on the recreation complex and give you the Kripo version. So on February 5th, the project engineers from Waterfield Design met with the planning board, for the planning board to hear more comments. They did get additional comments from the public. Out of that meeting, what, the result was that the project engineer from Waterfield is going to provide a photometric plan, which shows the lighting intensity for the abutters. That was one of the concerns that had come out of that meeting, as well as what the spillover lighting will be. They're also going to provide a list of similar projects in other communities so that planning board members can go to those various sites. There's also probably going to be a site visit for the planning board to go out to some of the other projects and to look at, you know, what the abutters would be experiencing in terms of the light spillover. The stormwater peer reviewers should have the review done to the, the engineering with their comments. So the peer consultant will provide a response just to make sure that all the concerns have been adequately addressed with Waterfield. And the Conservation Commission is going to have this on their agenda at a next meeting. That has not been set, that date hasn't been set yet. But as with everything else with this project, all of the meetings are on the website, as well as the information about the prior meetings that have led us to where we are now.
Just to piggyback on that, so at that meeting, I appreciate these updates. So it's going to the planning board again, Innovation and Conservation. The hope is coming out of the next planning board meeting, they will give the direction to the planning staff to start crafting a decision. We provided them with a historical overview of the individual meetings, a timeline through, from January of 2015, when the project was first thought of. I think Terry would wheel the back, the day further back, but the first time we had some kind of meeting on the project, January, January of 2015, with a timeline all the way through January of 2019, when there has been 30, to date, 35 public meetings, not counting meetings before the board of selectmen where there were no votes, and not counting any CPC meetings where there are no votes. So likely four dozen meetings and we gave that to the planning board so they would understand what's gone on to date. I think an advocacy that the plan submitted to the planning board stays intact, right? This is the one voted by town meeting. So planning board is doing their process. It's, I thought they were thoughtful and, and listened diligently and we're hopeful in the next meeting or two, we'll get past the planning process and on to bid.
Can you elaborate more? Because I think that's important terminology that you're using, that the projects stay intact. But the, the planning board is not in the position... I know that there was, there's some concern, right, that every, at every step in this process, there has to be a vote for approval. This has been approved. This project is happening. It's just a matter of tweaking the edges so that the site is consistent with what the feedback is from the public and what the planning board settle on. But that, that is the role right now that the planning board plays in this process is just reviewing the site.
When I said to the planning board, I, and I probably didn't articulate it well, but you know, what resonates with me is if you have 35 public meetings and then you have folks come to a meeting and have thoughtful input, you have to be cautious that what you, what the new folks introduce dozens in some way sort of offset or nullify the input from hundreds of people from 35 public meetings. That the planning board has a certain jurisdiction and role, a site plan special permit. They should be talking about when the trucks are going to roll on the site, be careful. Some of the things we bumped in, quite frankly, with the early childhood center where, you know, that sort of construction versus kids thing didn't go so well, as some parents here remember, that I think those are the kinds of things they should really be focused on to make sure that we have a better sort of process at the beginning. They certainly will view things like the lighting, which I think is a legitimate one. Stormwater is sort of automatic. But many of the items the planning board should know, and we tried to convey to them at the last meeting, that these items have been discussed and, and changed and discussed again and changed. And so I think we made that point. And so to your point, this is not a yes or no decision for the planning board. It's, do they, do they alter any level of the scope and how do we deal with the construction? And we've tried to say to them, you should be thoughtful and, and provide input as it relates to the construction. But as it relates to the program, right, what, how, what activities will take place in the site and when, we think that the program should rely, stay intact because it went through such a diligent public process. And to defend that, I introduced, as I've done to the board in the past, this idea of a committee, which I think both the planning board really embraced, and I know some of the residents did as well, and I provided you an email that outlines how I would see that committee. That's ultimately up to you. But I do think this is a wonderful facility that will have such a positive impact in the community. Having some kind of committee that, that sort of provides advice to those people who run the facility, like the town manager is important. So we believe the program as it was presented to the planning board should remain intact. That's our position. Thank you.
Thank you. Megan.
So briefly on the senior center, we are wrapping up schematic design, which is the first phase of, of the design project, which really focuses on the, the programming as well as beginning the elevation and interior layout. So we anticipate likely coming to the board, we're shooting for February 25th with a better present, a formal presentation to the board. We continue to work with the developer on finalizing the site in terms of the parcels that the town would ultimately have at the end of the project. We're also working with the developer to negotiate what aspects of site work will be accomplished as part of the, the formalization of acceptance of the parcel, which is trying to make the site pad ready for construction, which will assist us with some of the site design. So we are diligently negotiating that with them this week and, and hope to, you know, bring a, a total package in terms of the schematic design, initial schematic design and site layout to the board at the next meeting. We were hoping to have more formal designs to present to you as we looked comparatively at the program and budget, a little reworking to make sure we're aligned with what we have from a funding standpoint. And so we have to go back and modify some, some of the designs to make sure we're at the point we want to be at financially. And so we look forward to providing you a presentation instead of just documents, hopefully at the next meeting.
As you can tell, these folks have done a fantastic job of stepping in and said it to shepherd these two essential projects as it relates to the senior center. In essence, we have an opportunity to control more land, which is better for the layout of the senior center, providing more outdoor opportunity, providing better entrance and egress, providing a curb appeal that otherwise wouldn't existed while owning the 136 units, which are what was approved by town meeting, and, and creating less density on the residential side. So this is a, you know, if you like the project going to town meeting, this is a win-win-win coming out the backside with more land, more space, greater access, better for the seniors, better from a quality light perspective for those people who drive by, and making sure we're managing the density. So none of the abutting residents, in fact, I would argue all the abutting residents in fact, find an improved condition because we have moved the buildings further off the property line and created generally less density on the site. So what you'll see that, you know, Megan sort of intimated here a little bit, what you'll see as a final product is a product that is so much better than even that, that's been approved by town meeting and been approved by this board. I won't be here, but I think you'll be very excited as what you see as a product. Really good stuff. Great work by both of you.
Could I just ask one thing? You know, we've talked about incremental approval. Sometimes improvement, sometimes it's nice to see, here's where we started, here's where we are today. And I think that's part of conveying the value of the effort and sort of where we've come over time. So it might be nice, if that's possible, say, here's where we were, here's where we are today. Just kind of have those side by side. I think about that with the fields project. When I, when I see that at, at Stachy's and I see the, you know, the design up there, it's like, wow, where we started and where we are. I think that would be nice, if that's possible.
That's a huge thing here. I think that you hit it right on because I think when you see the sort of senior center, which we all embraced, but now looks sort of jammed on a site compared to what you're going to see.
Yep.
It's a huge, you know, what's happened with Megan's help since that point has been dramatic. And in the end, the developer's been very good to understand our needs and is working with us to make sure that we get a better site, a better product and a better residential development too. So when you see that, I think you'll be really impressed by that.
Cool. Great. Thank you. Thank you.
One's tentative groundbreaking and tentative completion. I just need to, I have to keep asking because I can choose all the different dates.
So we were anticipating going on to bid late spring. We're behind on that because of the trying to determine the exact site layout. We're hoping to, once we get through this next phase, to really let the architect go and the engineers go to get us into a situation where we can apply for permitting. And we really want to do that collectively with the developer. So it's an entire, we're going in with the site. So I think we'll know more. We're looking, it will probably begin the initial permitting end of March is what we're hoping, might be start of April.
Okay.
And then groundbreaking would be, you know, if we went on to bid, but you're not going to break ground until the fall and it'll be for our project, about 14 months construction.
So you need selectmen input, you need the other stakeholder input being the seniors. Then you need to go to your land use boards. It's taking three meetings to four meetings with the field. This could be three or four meetings, because that's nearly two months on land use.
Yeah.
Then you need to go out to bid probably, you know, as Megan said, midsummer, time you execute the documents and get in the ground. You're probably three months later than we hoped, but in the end, you'll end up with a better product that you're going to build once. Once is good. We don't need to do this again. So I think that's, that's the goal.
Great.
Thank you, Megan.
Awesome.
Okay. Next item, budget.
It's a really big book, budget. So we'll, we'll keep you, you're supposed to say it's just like the consultants, we'll keep you with five minutes or less.
Oh, my gosh.
So I'll give you the high level points. I almost picked up there. So I'll give you the higher, yeah, I'll give you the high level points of the budget. The budget follows the framework we've historically followed, right? There was no reason to deviate from what has gotten us here in, in many positive ways. We had set the framework with the board's assistance, going back to the budget policy statement that would stay around 3.75 percent. We honored that. It should be noted that the school committee for the seventh, eighth, ninth, for many years in a row, the school committee on January 31st adopted a budget which incorporates my recommended increase, which is 3.75 percent. Again, if you look around the world or any neighboring communities, that, that in and of itself, one year is astounding here. It's, it's become the normal course of action. So we've done that. They've adopted that end of the product. The rest of the budget is consistent with the way we do things. We increased departments if there's a specific need. They've been phenomenal for, you know, more than a half a decade of telling us what they need as opposed to just throwing numbers on a page. And so you see more often than not, the public safety departments are around a three, a little over 3 percent. And some of the other departments, it just depends year to year. So if the clerks have extra elections, their budget goes up and they don't, it goes down. Couple of new initiatives we've talked about and we've, we've implemented in this. Dollars sufficient to start a tree program in the community. Jim Stanford will come to you in the future with sort of a policy that, and how they envision moving forward, how a, a tree program, a tree replacement program works. There's dollars in the budget to do that. Two years ago, there was funding to add a training, we're referring to a training officer, fire department refer- training, what I'm, we're referring to a training officer. Fire department refers to an EMS officer, actually was in the budget a couple of years ago. Took it out last year as we negotiated the position and its terms with the fire department inclusive of the chief. Finally reached those terms to make sure the position, we know what the position does. You know, training is such an essential part to both of our public safety agencies. This gives us a formalized training officer, something that the chief has wanted for some time and we've supported in the budget. And so, that's incorporated in this budget. The second thing that we've found, and I think we experienced it a lot around the High, May, Elm intersection, was this interaction with businesses as we do roadwork. We're about to be, I'm, I'm optimistic that we will be doing more paving than planned, which would be those streets which are impacted by the Columbia gas disaster. And I think we're, we're moving down a path to, to get Columbia gas to honor what we expect them to honor with that. We're going to even do more paving projects than we historically do. And we've found some deficiencies. I know there are a couple of the selectmen have contacted me over the last year, who's, who's touching base with the, the impacted business? You know, those kind of things. Again, my, High, May and Elm was a really critical spot with that construction lasted a long time and we got a lot of feedback. So, we're proposing the addition of a, an engineer of sorts that would be overseeing our construction projects. At this point, what we would see is those horizontal construction, I think I put vertical here, but horizontal construction projects, mostly roadways, but could also be involved in the Fields project. So, that someone is looking in the hole, making sure the contractor's doing the right thing. And when there were questions by residents and businesses, that person would participate. That's in the public works budget. Those are the two notable additions. There was a request by the library to add some additional hours to part-time folks so they could bring the library presence to the farmer's market. We're supporting that as well. It's not a significant amount, but it's sort of an interesting add, a very creative request made by the library, and we're supporting that as well. It should be noted, under the recommendation of the board of selectmen, pushed by selectmen Smidely, we've also added pre-funding of OPEB for the two positions we're recommending. So, we're taking dollars and we've, we've done a back of the envelope, a little bit north of that, calculation of how much we would need to put in the bank to fund the OPEB liability of the two positions we're recommending. And we've put that, using operating dollars, into the budget. So, that we're not incurring any more OPEB liability by adding the positions we're recommending, which is something that we've been striving toward and ultimately will be in some recommendations around OPEB. That's a summary of the general fund budget. In addition to that, we are proposing, you see on the employee benefit side, we're still seeing some upward pressure on those, a nearly $800,000 increase in health insurance, even though that number is well below what it would have been if we were some, in a, in a different realm. We think that number in the long term will be a little more favorable than that. But we've averaged 5 percent of less, or less in terms of health insurance increase. That's, that is so significant. If I can give you, I will say this probably 10 times, but tonight I can give you only one recommendation. Recognize the success you've had by moving into the GIC and what it's meant to your budgets and your reserves and your ability to do other things across departments because we're in a better product that's more cost-effective. It's important you stay that course because it has done so much to what we've done. On the retirement appropriation side, we've always talked about the fact that there's, again, upward pressure on the retirement appropriation on or around 8 to 9 percent. That'll continue depending upon what the market return is. So, you'll continue to see the benefit side, you know, stress things out a little bit. But you're well positioned to manage that as long as the rest of the costs are controlled, our reserves continue to grow, everything is, is, is really in a good position. Lynn Savage is, is included, salary reserves to cover for what will be just the negotiations of the union contracts that are about to begin. These two ladies will lead those negotiations. They have tremendous amounts of experience. They would have been the folks that would have led them if I was here or not. These are the non-public safety contracts, other than the dispatchers. They'll begin that process shortly. Salary reserves have been set aside to, to make sure we had sufficient reserves to cover for those increases. Other than that, everything is pretty consistent with how we've done things. As it relates to the enterprise funds, the water enterprise fund is actually going down as a budgetary item. And that's because our, you know, our march along over the last seven-plus years to decrease debt service from what was nearly 45 percent to today, what is that, at about 20 percent, means the cost that's in our budget for debt service has declined. And even though we haven't had to raise rates and reserves are going up, the actual cost, the operating cost of our water enterprise fund system is declining next year. And there would be no expectation for raising rates next year. I'd, I'd, I'd bet with you in a friendly bet, you can probably keep that up another five or six years if you stay the course. So, that's what's happening on water. On sewer, there is a small increase in the sewer enterprise funds, but it's really driven by two things. One is we're using more pay-as-you-go capital to pay for things as we go, further driving down debt service, not a bad thing, in that the GLSD increase of about $70,000. If you eliminate those two items, you end up with actually a slight decrease in your sewer budget as well. So, the enterprise funds are on cruise control, and as long as you remain focused on doing the right thing, they should remain so for a long period of time. A concern which I've raised for the last two years or so, Stevens Estate revenue has leveled out, expenses are climbing, and the profitability of Stevens Estate is moving back toward the area that we have little or no profits. It's, it was sort of bound to happen if we couldn't expand the revenue base, is sort of this fixed pool revenue that I think that the staff up there has done a really good job of pushing that envelope. But again, it's not really a year-round facility in terms of the exterior. I think the ongoing maintenance-related items. So, Stevens Estate looks like it'll be, you know, about break even this year, which has been sort of, again, still to the good side, just barely. It, we went from a sort of a peak of a couple hundred thousand as a profit, and that's declining. What that means in the long term is that the Stevens Estate won't be able to invest in itself to make sure it take care of maintenance. And in the long term, that means the maintenance will fall back to the town. I think, again, I think the staff has done a wonderful job of try to meet, keep that moving forward, but it's, it's such an unusual animal. And that just sort of leans into, we're expecting the RFP responses this week on the Stevens Estate. We're encouraged by some of what we hear. We'll see where that goes. I mean, in the end, aside from the estate, meaning the, the land where the physical buildings sit, it is incumbent upon the town, and this town meeting, again, I told you I was only going to give you a recommendation, but I'll give you two, put a conservation restriction on that land over, you know, on Osgood Hill. I know it's been everybody's intention for a long time, do it. It's, it's just an extraordinary asset. It's why the community voted to buy the Stevens Estate, I think, 20, 10, 20, 25 years later, it's time to put that conservation restriction in place and make sure that that open space is protected. So, in summary, that's the budget. Again, the school committee is taking its affirmative action, which is great. The normal process is that you approve this, it can move to the finance committee, and you reserve the right over the next 30 days to make additional comment. So, I'd recommend you do that, unless you have any questions.
Have you already printed all the budgets you're going to present?
No, probably not.
Because you copy errored?
Yes, there's a few where, as we get to this deadline, we're moving rather quickly. So, we usually use the opportunity, I saw some pink tabs there. I saw Suzanne doing another spot check. So, we'll, we'll have a number of things from me calling horizontal, vertical, to some number differences, not substantive stuff.
If it were anywhere else, but again, I, I actually have a, I don't know if you, do you want to jump, like, you get to jump into this or not?
Well, I was going to suggest, it's 11 o'clock. I don't know. I mean, I have comments, but I really don't want to start making comments at 11 o'clock. I mean, I think, since we have 30 days to make our comments, my suggestion would be, we vote to pass it to the finance committee and we put it on our agenda for next week to make all of our comments, or next, next meeting. But I, I leave it to you guys. If you want to stay and make comments, we can do that, but it just seems really late to.
I'll answer whatever you'd like, Phil.
Only because you won't be here at future meetings, that's why.
Yeah, it's true.
Well, true, but, but Lynn will, and she's...
But for Columbia gas, that was the point. So, just, just going back into the restructuring of your office, we're going back after, well, I guess, could you just explain it? I don't want to make driving.
Yeah, sure. So, we used to have an assistant town, we used to, we used to have an assistant town manager, a town manager, and a full-time...
With the, the account that we're talking about a lot. Like, the Fields account would fall under what department, if we didn't know?
I don't think we show the Fields one. It's, it's a really anomaly, quite frankly. There's not many that fit into that category with this, this assigned revenue. We've provided you, I think, in this, did we provide the detail to how the expenditure and income has been on the, because that question was raised, on the Fields fund?
I didn't include.
Okay, so, we have a schedule that shows that. I think there's 498 or so thousand has been, I'm going to be off, has gone into the account. But that's a true anomaly.
And it was in the agenda, but I, I could just see, again, for us, the selectmen were, there's turnover now that, there's going to be turnover, and there's been turnover at the management side. I'm not imagining that these accounts just are forgotten about because I know that you have a really good grasp of it of every account that's out there. But I think that, just for institutional knowledge, I mean, how do we, how do we keep track of these accounts?
So, usually on the quarterly reports that I give to the, the board, there is a, there is a list of all the cash accounts, which includes these accounts.
Okay.
Any other revolving account that's involved. And it's broken down by the, the account structure. So, you have the revolving funds, I have the capital, then I have enterprise, capital projects and things like that. So, we have all the cash balances.
You get that quarterly?
But that's a good...
Under the town manager's report, okay.
Well, you get it under separate cover from Lynn.
Okay.
So, I mean, that's a good suggestion, though, that I can include a section within the budget for presentation that includes all these other funds that aren't directly related to a specific department.
Okay. I think, I, that, so I personally, I would find that helpful, and that's one of those things, you don't know, you don't know.
That's a good suggestion, and I can add to the next version.
Sorry. We're just throwing more things at you, Lynn.
Why not?
I have all the data, so it's been...
Well, and that I appreciate. Thank you.
Other questions?
I'll reserve mine.
That's great. Feel free to email me any questions before Friday. I'll be more than done.
Okay, so, we need to vote approval on this, subject to our ability to be able to comment for 30 days so that we can pass that to the, the finance committee.
So, Mayor Chairman, I move that the board of selectmen approve the town members' FY20 recommended budget, reserve and the ability to make amendments as additional information comes forward and to forward the budget to the finance committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. That's all that we have. Your motion to adjourn.
Second.
Am I wrong?
No, it's fine. It's fine. Keep on going. It's 11 o'clock.
Sorry. Okay. All in favor?
I reserve the right to waive the rest of the...
Sorry.